Good evening, everyone. Good to see everybody in person. Hope you're all staying safe. You guys. I wasn't that funny. Okay. Good to see Mr. Seif here. We'd like to keep her forever, but we can't. So, let's get on with our meeting. Presentation one. I'm going to announce the winner of the 2021 Florida... Oh, you were supposed to remind me of that. Call the roll three city clerk.
Commissioner Castillo? Vice Mayor Good? Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Saipul?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordis? City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledged by Judge Corin. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God invisible for the beauty of justice. Thank you all. All right.
Mayor, please, mayor.
Who was that?
Saipul.
Who was that vice mayor?
Saipul.
Yes.
You remember me, right?
Vaguely.
Before we start into our presentations, could I, um, could I speak for just a moment?
You can.
Thank you, thank you. Couple of items actually that I wanted to bring up. And my colleague Vice Mayor, Tom Good, we happened to be at a really great event the other day. You know, I had mentioned to you and brought up to you all about Kathy's Closet. Remember about a young lady, one of our students who was working on her silver Girl Scout Gold Medal, I believe? And so she put together this Kathy's Closet where they were collecting clothing, whether it was more formal clothing or business attire for students that wanted to go to a prom, that couldn't afford to buy an outfit, or wanted to have clothes to go for either a job interview or a college acceptance, you know, interview, and didn't feel like they had proper clothing and couldn't afford that. So she worked really, really hard and, and put together this fabulous event with a huge collection. So Vice Mayor, you want to chime in a little bit on that also?
Vice Mayor? Yes, thank you, Commissioner Saipul. And yes, that was such a tremendous effort by, by this young lady. And, um, and what's, what's even more wonderful is, is actually your involvement, Commissioner Saipul. This is, uh, I had opportunity to reflect, and this is a true citywide collaboration because this young lady lives in West Pines, lives within your district, but yet she is serving District One. And she is working through a local church, which is Trenton Lutheran Church, and it serves MacArthur High School. I, um, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for making that happen. It gives me a great pleasure and, and honor to serve with you. And it was a tremendous effort by the young lady that put that program together. And interestingly enough, she is connected to the historic part of this city because she is, I would, I would, I would sense she is the great granddaughter of one of the first aldermen's to the city of Pembroke Pines, who actually loaned the police department equipment to be able to do policing here in the city of Pembroke Pines when, uh, when we first started. And it was tremendous to be able to also be connected to that history. So thank you very much for bringing that together.
Thanks, thank you for those kind words, but actually all the credit goes to, goes to her, Savannah Brodessen and her family. And, and I would say, you know, a big thank you also to her family for instilling such ideals in her and, you know, such good character traits in her. And, and so thank you, thank you for that. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence also, but before I do that, I was asked, um, I, I was asked to read something, and so I'd like to be able to do that. As all of you know, we had a very unfortunate accident not too very long ago, a few days ago, where a young, a young man was, unfortunately was killed in a car accident, was hit by a car and, and was killed. And I had the opportunity to spend some time with the family and, uh, and, and talk to them and just share with them all of our, all of our wishes, you know, for their, I don't even know the right words to say, but that they will find peace and grace with what, what, what had happened. But, but the father, um, I was speaking to him, he had written a, um, a little, a few paragraphs and, and wanted it to be read into the record, so I'm going to do that, I'm going to do that now. The parents' names were Mercedes and Rodrigo Amengal, and the young man's name was Alfonso. Says, "Dear all, this is a letter of gratitude. It is to express our deepest conviction in the fantastic work carried out daily by a group of educational professionals at the academic village, AVM, and the Pembroke Pines Charter High School, PPCHS, collectively called The School. Our son Alfonso started his journey at AVM in the 2016-2017 school year, and our daughters Amelia and Olivia in 2019. They attend seventh grade at AVM while Alfonso was attending 10th grade at PPCHS when he passed away this month. After finishing elementary, their transition to AVM was an abysmal change, and they were so immediately felt happy and well-placed where they were. In this school, there is a total holistic focus on the person, not just the academics, on understanding them, their needs, their personalities, their shortfalls and strengths, and working closely with parents to address the former and amplify the latter. From the principal, assistant principal, counselor to the receptionist, teachers in pretty much all our grades, in pretty much all our grades, all our children attend, attended, knew, really knew them, got them and touched their lives, especially Alfonso's, who was so happy at the school. Back in 2016, at a year-end ceremony, a longstanding teacher going back to the school beginnings was retiring. The auditorium was packed with students and parents, and the moment her name was announced and she stepped up, a rock star-type setting ovation took place. We've never seen such a thing before and remember it to this date. We also remember the first meeting we had with, with Alfonso's teachers and counselor in sixth grade a few months after he had started to discuss his performance. We were amazed by their feedback, their constructive criticism, and the level of insights and psychological knowledge they had of our son in such a short period of time. And these are just a few examples. Although we should of course mention the, the way they made us feel and embraced us when our son left this world, we really don't want this to be a sentimental message, but rather one that should be told regardless of a tragedy, loud and clear, to highlight the excellence, dedication, passion, respect, and love of a group of people making this school the very, very best. Sincerely Mercedes Argagnans and Rodrigo Amengal, parents of Alfonso." So it was a terrible tragedy and something that will have changed, obviously have changed their life forever. So I'm asking mayor if we could have a moment of silence for, uh, for Alfonso.
Absolutely. Moment of silence, please. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, mayor.
Mayor? Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, uh, thank you, Commissioner. That was, uh, that was beautiful. Um, I'm sorry to have to report that the passing of Stan Siegelbaum. Stan was Lisa Siegelbaum's husband for over 40 years. And they were very much devoted to the Secret Garden at Century Village. That is a garden where people can go and find respite when their minds are occupied. And they spent a great deal of time working on that together. And, uh, his passing is, uh, is a loss for the Century Village community as well as for Lisa and her family. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in honor of Stan Siegelbaum.
Okay, let's have another moment of silence, please. Thank you. He'll be, he'll be missed. That Secret Garden was unbelievable.
Yeah.
When they came up with that idea and the work that was voted to it, they, they should be very, very proud. We're proud of them. So thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's go on with our presentation. I'll announce the winner of the 2021 Florida prepaid scholarship raffle sponsored by the Pembroke Pines Charter School Foundation, Inc., 210417. Sponsors Charter School Administrative Support Office. So we're going to turn to over there where Mr. Bear is, and we're going to draw the winner. Did I say that right? Nice. Thank you. Okay. Do you have the winning ticket?
That's right there. It's highlighted.
Okay. All right, so which one am I reading? Oh, okay, no problem. All right, the beneficiary recipient name is Diego McClaskey. Are you here?
Oh, wow.
Virtual? Diego, welcome to our commission meeting.
Is he here?
Diego, I was told that the mute, the sound was very low to our outside people. Diego, are you here?
No, he's not locked, he's not locked in. The pads may be locked in, but we're announcing the winner virtually.
All right. We're announcing Diego McClaskey. Congratulations. Thank you all for doing it.
Mayor. Mayor.
We're still on.
So on your, on your left side.
What's that?
Um, I, I want to...
Do you want to speak?
Yeah, I would like to speak.
Okay, all right.
Um, Diego and the McClaskey family, I coached Diego, um, over at Pembroke Shore, great kid. Congratulations. I'm like super excited to see that, um, everyone had, everyone had their opportunity and it can go to a more deserving family. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, our next presentation, I'm going to read a proclamation recognizing May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Pembroke Pines. In the city of Pembroke Pines Mental Health Awareness Month, whereas mental illnesses are biologically based medical problems that disrupt a person's daily functioning, and whereas high blood pressure is a disorder of the heart, and diabetes is a disorder of the pancreas, mental illnesses are brain disorders. Untreated, these conditions can lead to severe disturbances in thinking, feeling, behavior, or mood, resulting substantially in a diminished capacity for dealing with the ordinary demands of life. And whereas approximately one in five adults will be diagnosed with a mental illness in their life, and only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness will seek treatment. And whereas stigma and the fear of discrimination over the condition prevents many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce the stigma is through personal contact with somebody with mental illness. Whereas good mental illness is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas people with mental illness make significant contributions to our families and communities and recover if given the necessary services and support in their communities. Whereas the mission of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, of Broward County, is to promote greater public awareness about mental illness in order to change negative attitudes, behaviors, and stigma toward mental illness, and to improve the quality of life for all individuals affected by these diseases. And whereas NAMI Broward provides education and support programs to the community to help over 3,500 people with mental illness and their families in our community each year. And whereas NAMI Broward promotes early, accessible, quality mental health care that prevents hospitalizations and incarcerations and saves money. And whereas NAMI Broward advocates for improved healthcare, housing, criminal justice rehabilitation, meaningful job opportunities for people with mental illness, and supporting public education programs designed to help eliminate the persuasive stigma surrounding severe mental illness. And whereas NAMI Broward County observes the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month to raise awareness of mental health, to encourage those living with mental health to seek help and be uplifted by its message, you are not alone. Now therefore, I Frank Ciorus, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, do hereby declare May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Pembroke Pines and urge all citizens in our community to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of the mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination while promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. Congratulations. All right, we have Miss Pat, Mr. Patrick Hydeman, NAMI advocate, will accept proclamation virtually and say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Can, hopefully you can hear me. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Ordis and the commissioners for recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Your acknowledgement of the importance of good mental health will lead to healthier, safer, and more vibrant community. As you already stated, mental health affects approximately one in five of us. And I'm very fortunate that approximately 20 years ago, when my family was dealing with a mental illness, that I found NAMI. And NAMI Broward has many NAMI's, NAMI's a grassroots organization, and we provide support for families, education, and advocacy. We have support groups and educational classes for those with mental illness and their families that will help recovery. Most are offered virtually at this time, and for more information, please visit NAMI, that's N-A-M-I, broward.org. Um, NAMI Broward also has been busy with advocacy. We have been successful in pursuing state land and funding for a permanent supportive housing community in Pembroke Pines. We're very grateful for the collaboration of CAR4 Supportive Housing, the city of Pembroke Pines, um, and many others to help secure this dream. Lastly, NAMI Broward has an advocacy group which partners with Florida Mental Health Advocacy Coalition. And we lobby for and advocate for policies and legislative changes to improve the behavioral health system throughout the state of Florida and within Broward County. Now, I would like this, take this opportunity to invite you all to come to our website, to come to, um, you know, one of our meetings, virtual meetings, get involved. We are always looking for people to be involved in NAMI for, um, for our events to come. And in our advocacy, advocacy groups where we're looking to, you know, look to change the policies within the state of Florida. So again, you can reach us at namibroward.org, and on there you can find an email address, which you can send an email to us, and we'll obviously respond to you quickly. And anybody has any questions, they could reach out to us and ask for me. My name again is Patrick Hydeman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hydeman. We're so proud of you and your organization.
Thanks.
Okay. Principal Seif, would you come forward, please? Principal Seif has been a cornerstone of our city in education. Uh, when I first was introduced to her, I just could feel the dynamics of what she wanted to do and what she did do. And she always had a heart. And for people that were disadvantaged, we got fundraising, we sent them to Hawaii, we sent them to every place, all with her doing. So it was just been an extreme pleasure to work with you. And I want to read a proclamation from a great city. Whereas Elaine Seif has dedicated 33 years, you don't even look that old, of her life and career to educating students, supporting teachers and staff, and encouraging families and community members in the city of Pembroke Pines. And whereas Principal Elaine Seif began her career with Broward County Schools as a teacher at Pembroke Lakes Elementary School, where she worked for eight years as a fourth grade teacher and a science resource teacher for kindergarten through fifth grade. She then transitioned into a district level position as an area technology specialist. After that, she entered her career in administration as the first assistant principal of Panther Run Elementary. She served in this role for nine years until a warm and nurturing environment for all stakeholders, stakeholders. Whereas the PIF WIA MAD philosophy has proven to be effective in developing a caring culture at Panther Run Elementary and the community. Pay it forward, or paying it forward refers to repaying the good deeds one has received by doing good things for others. Its goal is to establish an ever-growing, branching, organic flow of generosity amongst fellow humans. Pay it forward because you never know how your actions can change the world. Who am I makes a difference. And a philosophy that we're all important and make a difference in the lives of others by our actions, words, feelings, and just being who we are. And whereas Principal Seif is an award-winning principal and received many honors and recognition during her tenure as principal. She is one of three finalists for the acclaimed principal of the year in 2010 and 2011. She was honored again as one of the three caliber award finalists for principal of the year in 2015-2016. Ms. Seif was recognized as Broward School's caliber award principal of the year in 2016-27. Ms. Seif was also the recipient of the Broward Alliance of Black School Educators, B-A-B-S-E, 2017, Educational Leadership Award, and the Broward Education Foundation Hall of Fame Discu- Distinguished Alumni Award, inductee in the category of education achievement. Whereas Principal Seif's philosophy throughout her tenure has been student and teacher-centered, she firmly believes that all students can and will learn if we teach them. Under Principal Seif's direction, the staffs of Panther Run strive daily to approve and to provide an important environment of academic excellence for all students. Now therefore, I Frank Ciorus, by authority vested me as the mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, and on behalf of the city's commission and residents of Pembroke Pines, hereby commend, recognize, and thank Elaine Seif for her unwavering commitment to each and every student at Panther Run Elementary, and wish her and her family the best in retirement. We're going to miss you, Principal.
Thank you all so much. Uh, it's truly an honor. I have the youngest of five children who are always ready to be kind, treat others with respect, and anything you can to help others. My mother is 88 years old, and I, I try to mimic the things she has taught us. If you look at the screen, many of my siblings and family members are on there. I was watching the safe pop up, um, but it's an honor. And truly Pembroke Pines is home. I started my career here. I served all except the two years I did in the South Area Office, which are also a true honor, but Pembroke Pines is home, and Panther Run especially is home. The pay it forward, who I am makes a difference. My dream was to be the principal of Panther Run, and the day I became that, I wanted to pay it forward and pay it back to everyone that I could. So that's what we challenge our students and staff and our community every single year is to be kind and make a difference. We've raised money for autism, muscular dystrophy, cancer, uh, but the biggest one was the Make a Wish, where we, we granted a wish for a child and sent her to Hawaii, and we couldn't have done it without this city. You all contributed, you all came out, you supported us, um, you've assorted, supported all my crazy things, being duct taped to a wall, slime.
Never crazy, never crazy.
Keen care. Whatever it takes for kids, we will do it at Panther Run. And the new principal that was appointed today will continue that. Um, it's been an honor to work for Broward County Schools, for Mrs. Good, Dr. Wanza, Dr. Hall, all the great people over the years that raised me. You all raised me into who I am today. I started as a teacher at Pembroke Lakes. Believe it or not, I was once shy and afraid to stand up and talk in front of people, and I had a principal that encouraged me and mentored me to speak. Sharon Aragi, the former principal of Pembroke Lakes, who later went up to the district as well, stuck the microphone in my hand and probably regrets it ever since then, the first time I was shy. And now you guys raised me and gave me the confidence to do this and the leadership to do this. And Panther Run did this. It's not me. It is Panther Run and the staff and children and families there. We are Panther Run, and we are there to make a difference for others. I can't thank you. This, it, it's just the crown of my career. Thank you so very, very much.
We're gonna miss you, Principal.
Thank you all so much. It's truly an honor. I have the youngest of five children who are always ready to be kind, treat others with respect and anything you can to help others. My mother is 88 years old and I, I try to mimic the things she has taught us. If you look at the screen, many of my siblings and family members are on there. I was watching the safe pop up, but it's an honor and truly Pembroke Pines is home. I started my career here. I served all except the two years I did in the South Area Office, which are also a true honor, but Pembroke Pines is home and Panther Run especially is home. The pay it forward, who I am makes a difference. My dream was to be the principal of Panther Run and the day I became that, I wanted to pay it forward and pay it back to everyone that I could. So that's what we challenge our students and staff and our community every single year is to be kind and make a difference. We've raised money for autism, muscular dystrophy, cancer, but the biggest one was the Make-A-Wish where we granted a wish for a child and sent her to Hawaii and we couldn't have done it without this city. You all contributed, you all came out, you supported us, you supported all my crazy things, being duct taped to a wall, slime.
Never crazy, never crazy.
Whatever it takes for kids, we will do it at Panther Run. And the new principal that was appointed today will continue that. It's been an honor to work for Broward County Schools for Mrs. Good, Dr. Wanza, Dr. Hall, all the great people over the years that raised me. You all raised me into who I am today. I started as a teacher at Pembroke Lakes. Believe it or not, I was once shy and afraid to stand up and talk in front of people and I had a principal that encouraged me and mentored me to speak. Sharon Aragi, the former principal of Pembroke Lakes, who later went up to the district as well, stuck the microphone in my hand and probably regrets it ever since then, the first time I was shy and now you guys raised me and gave me the confidence to do this and the leadership to do this. And Panther Run did this. It's not me, it is Panther Run and the staff and children and families there. We are Panther Run and we are there to make a difference for others. I can't thank you. This, it's just the crown of my career. Thank you so very, very much.
Okay, our next presentation.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on, can we have a few words? Yes, I noticed that school board member Patty Good is here. I don't know if she would want to say a few words.
Yeah, I should have done. I saw her there. Go ahead.
And, and we also have Dr. Wanza online. I don't know if maybe she might want to say a few words too.
Ms. Good, how are you?
Push the button, please, for the red light to come on.
Speak, it says speak. No, no, on the bottom. There you go.
Big letters, speak. There you go. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It really is an honor and a privilege. I know there are many Broward County Public School employees on the screen and of course Ms. Seif's family. She will be terribly missed. I admire this lady. She is an amazing daughter, a wonderful wife and an even better friend. But what she's been to the Panther Run family has been spectacular. Her pay it forward attitude is truly who she is. She has helped children, she's helped families, she's helped her staff, she's so loved. And of all the schools throughout this county, families with autism, with children with autism want to go to her school. Why? Because of her compassion and love for children. So I wish her the very best in her retirement. You will be missed. Thank you for honoring her.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Ms. Wanza?
I am on. Can you hear me?
I can, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, definitely all of the residents of Pembroke Pines and to everyone, school district to join. Just want to very briefly thank the city for always being such amazing partners with the school district and for taking the time to recognize the excellence, not only in our leaders, but across all of our schools in the city. I have had the privilege of working with Ms. Seif as a colleague for over 20 years. I know, I don't look that old either. Go ahead and say it, Mayor, I don't look that old either. But I certainly, don't let the hair fool you. But we just want to thank the city for recognizing her. We in the school district, we are certainly going to miss her. But all that she has created and lived and breathed into Panther Run Elementary School will continue to grow, thrive and be taken to the next level. We are excited about the next leader and we are looking forward to doing great work and always strengthening our partnership in the school district with the City of Pembroke Pines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
Ms. Good, Ms. Good, I just want to make one statement.
Did you want the mic?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I thought.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Good, I know you mentioned a lot of the things that, that Principal Seif has done, which all are true, but I will have to just tell you, one of my favorites was she made wearing capes fashionable. She made wearing capes fashionable and, and they were all out there with all kinds of capes, so I think that was great.
They made us a cape.
Yes, yes, that's true, that's true. Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you Commissioner for bringing that up.
And Mr. Mayor, may I add a few words? Yes, thank you. And I, I too want to emphasize that part of your bringing joy to, to our community and particularly to your school is the fact that she is able to wear many superhero hats and capes and such. It was always a delight, always wondered what were you going to do next year? You know, your creative programming has always captivated not just the students and the children, but also the parents. I know that you put your newsletter out on a regular basis. I, I always enjoy reading them because your creativity shines in many, many different ways and, and I thank you for sharing that. But probably the most important piece of my appreciation for you is your uncompromised love for your kids. And for that, as a village leader, we as a city, thank you and wish you great journeys in your future. Thank you.
Well said, well said. We're always here, Principal, we're always here. Okay, we also have Haitian Heritage Month. Whereas Haiti, a word meaning land of mountains, was given its name by its first inhabitants. And whereas the first black nation gained its independence in 1804. And whereas for the country's citizens, the national flag is indisputably a symbol of great pride, with the Haitian community equally proud. And whereas our vibrant Haitian community has contributed tremendously to the vitality of our city with rich cultural influences. And whereas throughout this month, the Haitian community will gather and celebrate their heritage throughout historical and cultural traditions and observances. And whereas a promotion for cultural awareness and understanding in the city is deemed valuable. Now therefore, I Frank Seoris, Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, on behalf of the City Commission, to hereby proclaim the month of May as Haitian Heritage Month in the City of Pembroke Pines and encourage all citizens to join me in honoring the Haitian community in the City of Pembroke Pines and also in celebrating the unique history, culture and people of the Republic of Haiti. And we have Ron Searin, President, Ron, are you on? Mr. Searin, President Searin? Mr. Searin, are you there? Any, any technical help? No, okay, we'll, we'll try to get him back. Sorry about that. All right, and our next presentation, I'm gonna read a proclamation recognizing May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Pembroke Pines. Asian America Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month. Whereas Asian America, a Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month originated in 1978 when Congress passed public law 95419. This law directed the President to issue a proclamation designating the week of beginning on May 4th, 1979 as AAPI Heritage Week. On March 28th, 1979, AAPI played in the American Society and our contributions to sciences, arts, industry, government and commerce. In 1992, Congress permanently designated May of each year as AAPI Heritage Month. Whereas the month of May marks two significant dates for the community. May 7th, 1843, marking the date on which the Japanese migrants arrived in the United States and May 10th, 1869, which marked the completion of the first transcontinental railroad with significant contributions from Chinese immigrants. And whereas AAPIs have made lasting contributions to America's wartime efforts in the Civil War, World War II, Korea, Vietnam and Iraq. During the American Civil War, Chinese men served on dozens of Union vessels. In World War II, Chinese and Japanese American men and women enlisted for military service in great numbers. More than 20,000 Chinese Americans are one out of every five in the United States served in the US military. And special recognition is given to the 44 second Regional Combat Team, an outfit of Japanese Americans who fought valiantly in Europe during World War II. Many of these men put their lives on the line for their country while their families were confined to internment camps back in the US. And whereas since the start of the pandemic last spring, AAPIs have faced racist violence at a much higher rate than in previous years. Hate crimes motivated by anti-Asian sentiment has significantly increased. Stop AAPI Hate, a report database created at the beginning of the pandemic as a response to the increase in racial violence, received 2808 reports of anti-American, anti-Asian discrimination between March 19th and December 31st, 2020. The violence has continued into 2021 and President Joe Biden just signed an executive order denouncing any anti-Asian discrimination shortly after taking office in January. And whereas Broward County has more than 56,795 Asian alone AAPI residents and 454,821 for Florida, as recorded on Census 2010, as the fastest growing population. The AAPI community has suffered unfairly during recent times and is most appropriate for our city to recognize this month. Now therefore, I Frank Seoris, by the authority vested me as the Mayor of Pembroke Pines, Florida, hereby proclaim May 2021 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Pembroke Pines and commemorate the AAPI community for their monumental achievement and services and how their accomplishments uplift all residents in our community. Congratulations. All right, we have Ms. Winning Tang, are you on, Ms. Tang?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners and resident from Pembroke Pines. It is honored that you recognize the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month and to the contributions that been doing for these communities. As you know, in the City of Pembroke Pines, the Asian population is growing much faster than other cities. And, and that is really assembling when we do the, get out the Vol count and then we got a lot of Asian really coming at the Southwest Regional Library and then to catch the vote. So the voice is really to be there and the one that you have mentioned about the railroad and 152 years ago when the Chinese American, the Chinese that time and to build, have to build a railroad connecting to the East and the West and for that contribution has been really shadowed by the, on the, in the history and during that time for the competition, there's no Chinese allowed at the champagne ceremony. And 152 years later and then their descendants have been really working on it to get the community and knowing about that chapter of history. And I think what you are doing tonight is really demonstrating the leadership in the City of Pembroke Pines, recognize the Asian American contributions and in all level in the, in the city and then in Broward County and beyond. And really for the Asian community and gonna work really hard and also thank you for the city have recognized a multicultural committee, committee and which have acquired a few Asian also serve and they're brought. And so I think that you can see the Asian is gonna be working with the city and then to promoting all the works and then you also recognize the Gandhi rate in your city and all these combinations together, really showing the leadership on the city of the Mayor and Vice Mayor and the Commissioner, working with entirely with the Asian community. And then we are, thank you for you to recognize us for the May and dedicate, putting that as an Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And we, on behalf of the Asian, we thank you again so much for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Tang. It's always a pleasure to work with you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, announcements of items to be pulled from the agenda, City Clerk.
Mayor, item four is pulled from the agenda pertaining to bid TS-21-05 Chromebooks, licenses, laptops and docking stations for charter schools.
Thank you. Item was at the request of the public.
Mayor, there are four items that, four registered registrations that were handed to me by individuals who want to speak at the request of the public.
Go ahead.
Wayne Zimmerman.
Mr. Zimmerman?
You can come forward.
Mr. Gordon, what do you have your hand up for? I don't control that, I only control this. Controller room. I've just been ordered by a resident. Volume up. Okay. Mr. Zimmerman, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. Mr., good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Dodge, Gordon and Ms. Graham. My name is Wayne Zimmerman. My wife Helen and I are 25-year residents of Pembroke Pines where we own our home in Spring Valley on Northwest 15th Street. For those of you who are aware, our homes, the homes of my friends and family, right, neighbors right here who all own homes along Northwest 15th Street, our homes back up right to Armstrong Park. So when we're in the backyard and we're playing with our kids or our grandkids, we're in our swimming pool, we're barbecuing, we're doing all of those wonderful things, we look over our fence, we see that park, we hear the park. When the jazz concerts are there, we actually sit in our yard and we enjoy the music. I wanted to say that Iris has kept us up to date on the plans for the Armstrong Passive Park Project. Try saying that five times fast, right? And we like what we see. We like what we see. You know, when I moved in in 1996, all of my kids were roller hockey people. And when we unloaded the truck and we took out the hockey sticks and everything else, there were a lot of people that were opposed to the hockey park. They didn't like the fact that, you know, we, we enjoyed it. But today, the hockey rinks are not used very much. So the passive park process or project that you worked on, and I have to give you my compliments because it really is, it looks like something that our residents will use. We had conversations with many of our neighbors and we talked about it, we went over the project and we looked at the plans. I also spoke to some people that I know, relatives as well as friends in Towngate. All agree that it looks like a really, really good project and we'd like to see that happen as quickly as we possibly can. We do have some concerns however, again, and I want to repeat, our backyards are right there at that park. For those of you, Mr. Dodge, I know that you, you should be aware of the berm. I sent you an email just the other day with a copy of the letter that was sent to us in 2019, how the city was going to maintain the berm. We have a, a screen of Eureka Palms. We do not want to see those palms removed. I want to make that very, very clear. Those Eureka Palms are our screen, they do what they, they are intended to do. They provide visual and noise abatement for us in those, in our homes. So we want them there, but they need to be maintained. If you were to go walk the fence line behind my home, in the homes of my neighbors, right now, you would be appalled at the condition that's back there. We, every single one of us have removed all kinds of critters from our pools and I'm talking about rats, mice, snakes, possums, raccoons, you name it, we get them back there. There's a breeding ground behind our fence. Some of our neighbors have gates, I do not. I chose not to put a gate in my fence, but I paid 12 grand for the fence that surrounds my home, all right? The fence is being damaged because of Eureka Palms fall on top of it. We occasionally have to go back out there and we go clean it because the city doesn't. Now you guys have, the city has a vendor that takes care of the berm, they mow the lawn, we watch them, they mow the whole top of the lawn, they don't do anything along the fence line or the Eureka Palm.
Okay, let me, let me just say, Mr. Dodge, we're aware of this and we want to eradicate that, we want to make sure it works out good. This has been a bad year. I'm not gonna use excuse, but it's been a terrible year, right? Work to be done, anything like that. So we're gonna make sure that you're satisfied, Mr. Dodge is gonna get with you and the residents out there, Commissioner Seif does a great job. No, no, you can't just come up here. You're a big guy?
I'm one of the neighbors.
You've still got three minutes.
Okay. To, to Mayor, what are you saying?
Sir, tell the record who you are though.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, actually, good evening. My name is Frank Marquez, 16273 Northwest 15th Street. Also over 25 years Pembroke Pines resident, volunteer and currently involved in many other programs out here in the city. I am tickled pink to be, to be a resident of Pembroke Pines and I love it that I call it my home. However, I know it's been a difficult year, but we're talking 20 years, 20 plus years that all we hear is the same thing over and over again. Mr. Dodge was at my house a couple months back, got on the fence, on my fence with a ladder and I had a call from you at eight in the morning and a letter went out the same day and it was great. It was cleaned up, but to this day, nothing else has been done. So my ask, and I'm sure of all these neighbors here, is that when this program moves forward, that there is a line item mandating the cleanup of that and that we hold it accountable to being cleaned up. That's all we ask. That was my 30 seconds.
Mayor?
Mr. Dodge, let's make sure we do that.
Mr. Mayor, I did receive the email and I did speak to Ms. Sorenson and she's gonna follow up on it immediately to make sure it's part of the ongoing contract that they're back there.
All right, well, that's, that's, that's good to hear. And again, what we're looking for is accountability, you have a vendor, they're contracted to do the job, we want to make sure that there's somebody out there that does it. Right now, the only time it occurs is when we start making phone calls, which by the way, I will say that, you know, the city has been responsive, so you know, there's, there's no issue there, but we shouldn't have to keep doing it. Now, when we move forward with this project, we can anticipate, or at least I, I can envision a lot of usage of that area because those hockey links are gonna be gone. There's a very small demographic that uses the hockey parks right now. When that goes away and you put that passive park with the, with the, you know, bike paths and the walk paths and jogging paths, as well as the, the kiddie park and the adult workout center, which by the way, my daughter who lives in Towngate made a comment, she said, you know, it would be real nice if you had the adult park closer to the kiddie parks and when I'm working out, I can watch my son. Okay, so it's just something to think about anyway.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
We just want to... We just want to be sure that.
I just want to make, no, this item is item 17 on the agenda this evening.
Oh, item 17.
And a presentation will be made by the architect on the design.
You can't speak on that item, though.
I can't speak on that right now.
Try to, try to stop him.
Commissioner Cyple.
Yes, Mayor, thank, thank you so much. Um, uh, and thank you all for, for, you know, for coming out and, and expressing your, you know, your ideas and support of, um, but, but we have had conversations. And one of the conversations that I had, Mr. Marquez also, was, um, that I did as, as Mr. Dodge did. Uh, he and I have spoken about it as well as Ms. Sorenson. And I expressed to her the couple of the concerns that you all had was first that the berm was remaining, which she confirmed absolutely the berm is remaining, and that you all, uh, wanted the auricas to be there and to be maintained properly. And what I asked her to do would be then to make sure that the vendor, whoever is assigned to that area, would put this on a regular rotation for, um, heavy maintenance, which would be maybe trimming, you know, that kind of stuff. But then on a shorter time for just cleanup maintenance, where just things fall down and stuff, you know, the, the, the tree, the limbs come down, the fronds come down. So she said that that would be something that she would absolutely look into and that that, uh, and to stay more on top of the vendor, uh, whoever is selected to, to be there to do all that maintenance work. And I think that, again, with talking to the, the arborist, to understand what those eureka palms need to be done to them in order for them to stay healthy, to work out that schedule with that.
Very good. There's just two, and I don't run out of time. There are just two more concerns that we have, and that is operating hours for the park. Once we do get to the point where we have the, uh, I guess the pavilion, is that what you want to call it, the building? Which, by the way, the layout looks very, very nice. I'd love to see the architects, uh, engineer drawings once they do that building. The second part of that, however, is the noise. And when I, if, if some of you who live close to Miramar Parkway, I have a daughter that lives, she's in Pembroke Pines, she's over there right by the hospital. When they have those concerts in the Miramar Park, all right, I've been over at her house, and it's just like out of control.
Mr. Zimmerman, let, let me just, let me just delay you on that. The, the passive park is a passive park. It's not set up to have any types of concerts or anything like that, the stuff that's close to your house.
Okay, good, because we're, we're, we're concerned about the building.
That's not set up that way. The building would be anything, uh, anything that would be happening there would be inside the building. So, so that would, that would not, not cause you issues that way either.
We're on it.
Okay, very good. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
We're committed to you from the commission. We're on it.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
The second, Ms. Graham.
Richard Marrera.
Richard.
Good evening. I apologize because I have a little bit of the same topic because I live on the same street.
No problem. You got, you still have three minutes, though.
Right. So mine's quick. I live just around the corner from them. They live on 15th.
I'm sorry, you were good.
I live on 16th, and I'm actually the last house on that Eastman. And over the years, I've had code enforcement come out, police come out when I've crossed and had to clean. In 14 years that I've lived there, they've never, ever maintained those trees. So if they say it when, uh, actually today, Dyna Service was out there cutting grass, and I caught them, and I said, man, please, if I go there, you guys call the cops on me, or the city calls the cops on me for cutting it. I went there, you go to my house, I'm probably the only one that has it trimmed because I did it a few years ago, and I got written up for it. My concern more is, I love the idea of the park, but even today, we have officers that park there during the day, and a lot of people are parked in the, mine has the end of the parking lot, and people are hanging out there. You don't know if they're having lunch, what they're doing, and there's no checkup. So if you're opening the park for more traffic and more activity, I've had to, I've had to put cameras in my house. I've got the hill where they look at the lake. Um, I can't have an obscure fence like all of them have because they don't have view to a lake, but our association doesn't allow me to have an obscure fence because I have a corner portion of a lake. I've seen people on the hilltop romancing the stones. I've seen people fishing. I've seen everything you can imagine, and it's very uncomfortable when you're home. At the same time, I've seen people walking in the back of my house where I feel I'm endangered.
Okay, we're, we're on it.
Okay? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Graham.
Ramon Marquez.
Ramon, how are you?
Good yourself. Uh, well, Wayne said most of the stuff already, uh.
We need, we need your name for the record.
Ramon Marquez.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you for the program that you guys are doing. I think it's wonderful. Uh, we all have the same concern, you know, about the privacy in our homes. Uh, we all have children and grandkids. So yeah, the auricas will stay there. That'll be a great idea, I think. Uh, uh, that will help a lot of the privacy there. And also if they can clean it up, that, that'll be the main problem that we've been having for years. I mean, we've also been there for over 20 years, so, uh, it's sad to see the park go away because my kids used to play there all the time. And I coached there too for, for some of the kids. So that's, it's, it's good, but it's a good idea to have at least something for now us that we're older to walk in there and do something like that. So, thank you so much, and hopefully everything goes well.
Thank you. Uh, well, you have the support of this commission. We're going to make it work. And we know how to make it work, so we're going to do that. Right, Mr. Dine?
Yes, Mayor.
There you go. Item four, there's City Attorney, City Clerk.
Mayor, that's it for the in-house requests. But I've handed over to Jonathan Benier in case there was anyone.
Before, before you do that, I just want to assure all the residents, you know, this is a city that just doesn't say they're going to do it. We're going to do it. I mean, when you talk about making a phone call back to you, we're responsive. We're going to do it. And, you know, some just want this and that, and they can't get, we're going to do it. I'm going to make sure most of you are satisfied. That's a commitment from us. Okay. Ms. Graham?
Mr. Mayor, if I can help you with the next set of processes that you'd like to establish for the record this evening?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. You're operating tonight under the Governor's Executive Order Number 21-102 that was actually signed by the Governor May the 3rd. Each Commissioner is physically present here at City Hall on the dais. Members of the public are invited to attend the meeting to attend physically. They're in the audience this evening. There's no, uh, requirements of attendance. The, the CDC guidelines are, are recommended. Uh, however, the issues that relate to that are, are made of record by the Governor, uh, and by the CDC. There are other means of access. This is to, to some degree, Mayor and Commissioner, a hybrid meeting. Members of the public who would choose not to attend physically, for whatever particular reason, are able to access the meeting under Florida law in several different ways. They can call in by phone. The phone number is 1408-418-9388. They can also access the meeting via the WebEx platform. You'll note that there's a gallery on the screen of those folks who either could not attend or would choose not to attend. The meeting access number, and Mr. Benia is the one that runs the, uh, the program to make sure people have access. That dial-in number or the actual meeting access code is 173-618-0159. Uh, folks who have submitted comments before the meeting are able to do so by having pre-registered. In some cases, there are. Some cases, they are not. Uh, the comments that are submitted by email will be read into the record for any particular item, not otherwise under public comment. Members of the public who have pre-registered and have accessed the meeting via the WebEx platform will be identified and told to unmute their phone to comment on the item that's before the commission at that particular moment. The person will be asked to identify themselves by stating their first name, their last name, and their address, and also pushing the, uh, the button star three, raise their hand. Mr. Benia, raise your hand for a minute so people can see you. Um, he will be able to access the, uh, the persons to get, to get into the meeting in a, in a virtual basis. Members of the public who did not pre-register have the same right of access under Chapter 286, the Florida Sunshine Law. Uh, they may access the meeting by dialing in as well, and also raising their hand and being identified for the purposes of that particular item. Limitations are three minutes per item. Should there be a specific item under which the public has sought access, Mr. Benia will coordinate with the Mayor and the Commissioner to make sure that any member of the public who could not physically attend this evening, could not be here for whatever reason, or chose not to for whatever reason, given the status of the pandemic, uh, will have a right to be heard during the course of this evening's meeting. And Mayor and Commissioner, that's the abbreviated version of the new virtual meeting concept. You are live, you're in person, you're in full compliance with Florida law. Thank you.
I'm glad that's the abbreviated version.
Yes. Last one was longer.
Mr. Benia, anybody from the public?
Thank you. Good evening. Um, as of right now, we've, uh, placed the instructions through the chat, through the WebEx platform, and nobody's raised their hand. Um, also, if you, if you're calling in and would like to make a public, uh, comment, you can press star three at this moment to raise your hand so you can be called upon, uh, to pull any items from the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Benia. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a, I have a request. Um, we have a good number of residents that are here, um, uh, for a particular item, 17. I'm asking if, can we please take that out of order?
Sure. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item 17, without objection from the Mayor and Commissioner, uh, for the record is the discussion on the proposed conceptual design provided by Manny Sinolovsky for the renovation in Spring Valley Park. Mr. Sinolovsky is available on the gallery and would be happy to make a presentation along with staff and city administration. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item 17.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Mr. Sinolovsky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sinolovsky?
Yes, uh, Ms. Sorenson may have some introduction that she wants to make?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good morning, Mayor, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. Um, Christina Sorenson, Recreation and Cultural Arts Director. Uh, Manny Sinolovsky is here today. Manny is the architect that we've hired to create the design criteria package for the William B. Armstrong Dream Park and Spring Valley. As it says in the agenda item, um, some time ago, the Commission gave us some direction to incorporate the Spring Valley portion of this park into the design criteria package for the Dream Park. Um, we've given you a conceptual design, and Manny is going to present it to you today, and we're just looking for some feedback from the Commission, and hoping that, uh, we can take this and finalize our design criteria package to bring back the Commission to, for permission to advertise. So with that, Manny, I'm going to let you take over.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sorenson. Mr. Mayor, good evening, Commissioners. This is Manny Sinolovsky. My, uh, office address is 1800 Eller Drive, Suite 500, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Delighted to be here with you this evening. As you can see, this aerial photograph shows the existing, uh, Dream Park as it is today. Uh, it's easy to view the rinks of the courts. It's easy to view the parking field that travels from east to west. And a reminder that on the north side of that parking field towards the northwest, there is a project that was previously reviewed and approved by the Commission, which is a community facility of about 6,000 square feet. Um, and that amenity, in effect, is not going to be reviewed this evening, but it'll be included in an upcoming design criteria package for the south side of the Dream Park, which is what we're going to discuss tonight, which is the repurposing of what was previously the rinks at, uh, at the park. The next image shows you a more detailed, uh, area of the overall park. It's important for you to know that on the north side, there's a bit over four acres of, uh, landscape area that, again, will be improved when we develop the, uh, 6,000 square foot, uh, community facility. Uh, and on the south side, where the four large rinks and the two practice rinks dwell, that portion of the park is about five and a quarter acres. Together, there's over nine acres of green space, open space, and in between those two areas is the existing paved parking field that is intended to remain. The next image, and it's maybe a little hard to read, uh, because I overlaid the 6,000 square foot community facility over the existing landscaping, but that is, if you will, the north half, if you will, of the project, that, again, will be part of the design criteria package. And this is a second round of it because we did, uh, put that out before previously and did not move forward with it. The next image is an overlay of the proposed passive park over the existing, um, field of rinks. It's important for you and for the community to know that we have no intent whatsoever in reducing the existing berm that is in place. We have no intent whatsoever in eliminating the fence line that is there to separate the park from the residents to the south and to the west. And we certainly don't have any intent to, um, remove any of the auricas, or for that matter, any landscape improvement that exists to create either a visual or a sound buffer with our neighbors. If we go to the next image, the next image, in effect, shows both sides together. And the only reason that we're really looking at this is to remind the community that we're very cognizant of the privacy requirements, the noise requirements, the lighting requirements, the privacy requirements that they deserve and that they desire, and that we have developed a plan, literally, of a passive park that'll embrace and enhance all of the above. In the next image, we've, we're removing the overlay of the existing aerial, and the community can see the passive park to the south and the community amenity that they saw previously and even commented on before this evening on the north half of the park. We're now going to focus on the south half, which is really what none of you all have seen before in a formal commission meeting setting. And what you see there is a grouping of rings, R-I-N-G-S, creating a combination of trails and walks and paths, all of it marked with stations throughout that system. And in effect, on the west side of the park, a covered, yet significant playground area for children ages preschool through 12 years old. The existing two-story building that right now serves as the control center of what was the rinks, R-A-N-K-S, is going to remain to serve this passive park because it has spaces for restrooms, it has spaces for storage, it actually has a upper level that allows us to view the whole campus as a whole. And at the end of the day, we will have not only a walkway system, but we will have five and a quarter acres of fully developed landscape improvements that combined with the hardscape of the paths, trails, and walks, is going to offer a very passive, yet interesting environment for the community to enjoy. In the next image, we see the blow-up of the actual play area that has multiple stations for play for children's age from preschool through 12 years of age. And each one of those stations is really intended for a particular age group. We're separating the age groups by equipment, although all of them are under a significant canopy so that they're under shade and being protected from weather. This first image that you saw before is, if you will, for toddlers. This image shows you both the two-to-five-year-old equipment and the five-to-12-year-old equipment. The next image shows you in more detail, um, the two-to-five-year-old equipment. And the next image shows you already the equipment for the older children. There was a little bit of conversation previously about equipment that we're providing for, if you will, young adults and adults. That equipment is throughout the walkway system. That walkway system will be marked so that you know the distances that you're either walking, or that you're jogging, or that you're trailing. Uh, and there's 11 stations altogether, and those stations will have exercise equipment that, in effect, is, is intended to support the more mature passive park user. Um, and finally, if you want to, um, we can review any questions that you may have, because I think this is the last image that we have of the playground equipment.
Yeah, that's it.
Any questions?
Just one question regarding lighting. Would we be using?
Can't, can't, you can't do that, Mr. Zimmerman. You got to come up. Noun to name again.
Yeah, I just have a question regarding the lighting in the park. Are you going to be using LEDs?
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wayne Zimmerman, 16293 Northwest 15th Street. Pembroke Pines, Florida.
Thank you. Mr., Mr., yeah, Mr. Zimmerman, I apologize that I didn't add, um, the lighting that we proposed. Um, so here we go. First of all, all of the sports field lighting that exists on the site today is going to be removed. For that matter, I spoke of repurposing the rinks. The reality is we're rem... of repurposing the rinks. The reality is, we're removing all the rinks. We're removing the sports lighting, which is significantly tall, and we're also removing the bleachers that exist throughout the park. When we do that, we're gonna replace the lighting with pedestrian-level poles and fixtures. We're probably talking about poles that aren't much taller than twelve feet, and that's, when I say twelve feet, I'm talking about the height of the fixture. Those fixtures will be LED. Those fixtures will be properly encased, if you will, so that there's no glare or spillage over to any property, whether it's to the south or to the west. Nonetheless, they'll be very energy efficient, and for that matter, they will be used for what we consider to be security-level lighting so that, in the event that there is some evening program, that we don't have to worry about the level of lighting. The lighting in the parking field will remain. The lighting in the parking field will remain.
So, Mr. Zimmer, Christina, the intention of this park is to be passive, so we're not gonna be lighting this park up at night for night use. It's the sun, the park closes when the sun goes down. The lighting that Manny is proposing and talking about is for safety. So this is not gonna be a park that we light up at night.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Sanalowski?
No, sir. Thank you, and thank you, Christina, for clarifying.
As usual, a great project. We never have to worry when you have your projects. Thank you so much. Questions for Mr. Sanalowski? Questions? Okay, let's move on.
Mayor, Mayor, excuse me. We have a, somebody from the public, Jonathan, somebody from the public that would like to speak.
Go ahead.
All right. Call in, call in number nine-five-four-six, that ends with five-one. I will unmute you. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. Go ahead.
My name is Akes Gupta. I'm resident of Towngate Community. First, I want to thank my Commissioner Cyphal. She let me know, or let us know about this meeting. I just had the phone number. I'm listening on the phone. I wish in future, City can consider giving us the link. We can see what's going on, all the images and everything. We can click on the link and use it. And for her address, I live in Contembo Walk subdivision, address one-five-two-four-seven Northwest First Street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Benioff?
That's it, sir.
All right. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Items one, two, three.
Mayor, don't we have to take a vote on this one?
On which one?
Seventeen that we just did?
Oh, seventeen, yes.
Mr. Mayor, there really is no vote. This was a presentation, to let you know.
That's the right thought.
Could we then ask for a consensus that we move forward with this presentation?
I think it's beautiful. All right. With consensus, I get no, no non-consensus, okay?
Good.
Okay, so Mayor, I just wanna make sure if I could, Mr. Dodge.
What?
So this will come back to us then as the complete, like, the complete project with north and south part of it, and then at that point, we'll actually do our, our voting on, on direction to go forward.
Yep.
That is correct.
It's our normal budget.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. Item one, two, three, five.
Didn't we just vote to go forward?
What's that?
Didn't we just vote to go forward?
No.
Why don't we just vote to go forward? Why?
Because I have to read them and get a vote.
No.
On the last item.
I took consensus. I got no objections. I said, from consensus, we're gonna do it. They don't need a vote.
Hold on a second. My question is, why don't we just direct administration to do it?
We did.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to direct administration to build a park.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Hearing none. Call a roll, please, city clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda.
Thank you.
Item one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, thirteen. What is your pleasure? Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull thirteen, item thirteen.
What was that number, I'm sorry?
Thirteen.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else?
Not good.
Okay, so that's the only poll, is item thirteen.
Can't hear you.
All right, call a roll, please, city clerk, for the consent agenda.
Mayor, we need a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'm losing it tonight. Did you make a motion, Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay, need a motion. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Cyphal, motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Schwartz.
Okay, second, Schwartz. Discussion. Hearing none. City clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item thirteen, Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Item thirteen is motion to approve the first amendment to the agreement with Aizen Corporation DBA AB Towing Services for citywide towing services.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cyphal. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I recognize that this is, you know, almost seemingly like a natural, just to approve a, an amendment, or a contact, a contract continuation for another couple of years. I, I just wanna express some concerns because this, this type of service, there has been a massive change in law, and that change in law is essentially, the city can no longer collect a franchise fee for the services provided by the vendor. So I'm, I'm a little bit focused on, on the process at this point. I, I recognize that during the bid process, the franchise fee was fifty percent of the weight score, and/or in terms of ranking the companies. And because franchise fee is no longer to be able to be paid to the city, is no longer allowed to be in an RFP, or an IFB, or whatever it is that we push that bid process out. So to me, there's a substantial change in, in the requirements. And actually, I, I think that's, in a way, a good thing because I see this as an opportunity to even possibly create a library of services as opposed to just a single vendor, because a single vendor is no longer going to pay the city a franchise. And when you don't have a franchise, in the absence of a franchise, it's, it's, to me, almost worthless. So the way that these, the, this, this service is going to be structured going forward, even in the, in the, i-if we did a renewal, would be strictly, the city would essentially be billing the people who are getting towed, and the city will be billing them what our administrative costs are in order to process that. So no matter who the haul, who the tow company is, it's going to be the city that's going to be looking for cost recovery direct to the person that's getting towed. So I, I'm not in favor of, of, of just awarding a contract where things have substantially changed, and there's an opportunity to actually create a library of services. And so I, I would like to, for my colleagues, to consider that we just go out and rebid this. There's nothing wrong with this. This is probably more like an RFQ now, just, and then you can create a library of services. You have multiple vendors on the list. And, and that way, if, you know, whoever is needing the service makes the phone call, and somebody's busy, you can say, okay, fine, I'll go number two and get, you know, and get the, get the help. So right away. And particularly, if we're in a traffic situation, and you're holding up the traffic because you are waiting for a tow truck to come, I think that there, an urgency is, is, is in order here as well. So, so I'd like to, to make the motion to, to go back out.
Hmm? Wanna make an amendment, because we already read the motion?
All right, so, well, okay, so if I can get a little bit of help, what I'd, I'd like to do is just.
What's that?
Substitute motion.
All right, so make a substitute motion.
Folks, city attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Which is applicable?
It would either be amended or substitute motion, depending upon whether or not the...
Vice Mayor, it's up to you. Go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to make the substitute motion that we go out and rebid this and develop a library of services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cyphal. Discussion.
Yes.
Who was that?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the, the thought. I, I think that there's a lot of good things behind it. However, this vendor has, is a minority-owned business. There, there are very few of them who we have the great pleasure to do business with on such great terms. They have, over the years, established themselves as a good business partner, not only with the City of Pembroke Pines, but also with the Police Department. All of those connections and linkages are in place. And just based on performance, whether they pay us a franchise fee or not, and, you know, the legislature can be fickle. You know, this year, they, they say this, and then next year, they say something else. At least for the, 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 the present time, I, I'm going to return the, the good work that, that this firm has done with, with my vote and support for them. I just don't see the point of, of upsetting the, the strategy that is working for the city. So I
Thank you.
I can't support the motion.
Thank you. And franchise fees is always the key with the towing.
And, and, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not asking to interrupt any type of relationship or performance. I'm just asking that we just kinda, sorta go a little bit in line with the way legislation has been intended, and we have an opportunity to create a library of services, and, and you just have more than one company now. That's all I'm looking for.
Further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Cyphal?
I, I read this, like, a number of times, and I read the information that we were provided, because I wanted to make sure that I was really understanding, and I questioned a little bit about the actual legislative change and, and how that really, you know, played out. But the reality of it is, there is a legislative change. The process is, is different now than what, what we've had in the past, and it, and it, it's through, it's through no fault of anyone that that has happened, but there, there is certainly is, and this is not anything against the, the current company, you know, apparently, they've done a, a, a good, a, a good job. Otherwise, I think we would have been hearing a lot of, you know, complaints and, and issues being brought forward. But, but the fact that the process is different because of the legislative change and how the city's involvement and the city's now requirements to do things, I, I, I think if we're looking at a change, this is an appropriate change to, to sort of open it up and, and, you know, move forward with, with that. So I, I am supporting the motion, obviously. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. City clerk, call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. We're on regular item sixteen. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Actually, on fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, fourteen, Mayor.
Boy, I'm, I'm messed up today.
Which, if you will, Mayor and Commission, by virtue of the action taken on the prior item, it would render moot item number fourteen, unless you'd like me to read it into the record to turn it down, or otherwise allow it to be essentially, it, it's a moot point. You've already raised the bar in the context of the...
I think that's better moot.
Yes.
Okay.
This, um...
I'm sorry, I did too.
Unless, unless, staff, let me rephrase if I can, Mayor. This, this particular ordinance would actually create the, the mechanism under the statute, but it would not specifically apply to number thirteen at this point, because you changed, changed the rules on the thirteen. Allow me to read the title. We'll get that into the record and proceed with your permission, Mayor. Thank you. Fourteen is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one-dash-twelve. On first reading, it's an ordinance, the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, entitled Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Creating a Section Number Seventy-two-zero-nine, Entitled Towing Services Administrative Charges, Establishing an Administrative Charge for Towing Services, Providing for Codification Conflicts, Providing for Separability, Providing for Effective Date on First Reading, Item Number Fourteen, Twenty-twenty-one-dash-twelve.
Okay. Anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to move that.
What?
I'd like to move this.
Go ahead. Vice Mayor moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cyphal?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that this ordinance has anything to do with the prior item, because it doesn't make specific reference to...
To thirteen, that's correct.
To thirteen.
Correct.
This is just specifically aligning our ordinance with state statutes.
Confirming the state statute in the ordinance, allowing the admin fee, that's correct.
So we're not, we're not, we're not maining anybody specific, so I'm, I'm fine with this.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all.
Inquiry to the city attorney?
Item fifteen, city clerk. How many city attorney?
Mayor.
Let's call him.
I'm sorry.
What?
I, I have an inquiry for the city...
Commissioner Schwartz wants to speak, dude.
All right, so, it, okay. You don't have your button anymore?
I have it.
Okay.
You're on it.
Uh, city attorney?
Yes, Commissioner.
This commission just adopted, on the four-to-one vote, the new state statute.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Yeah, the ordinance essentially tracks the state statute. It recognizes that you're not gonna be charging a franchise fee, but in fact, charging the admin fee, which is allowed by state law.
Thank you.
And by the way, just to clarify, it doesn't apply to thirteen, because thirteen is rendered moot.
Got it.
For that particular operator. Thank you.
All set now? Okay, item fifteen, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Item fifteen is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-one-R-dash-thirteen, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, appointing members to the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, directing the city administration to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date. Number fifteen, twenty-twenty-one-R-dash-thirteen.
Okay. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Moved by Commissioner Cyphal, second? Second by the vice mayor. Discussion. Okay. City attorney, do we need action, or we already discussed?
You need to take a vote on the, on the item, Mayor. To the extent that there may be members of the public, however, that are not physically present, or dialed in, or clocked in in some fashion, it'd be heard. You may want to ask Mr. Benioff.
Mr. Benioff? Mr. Benioff?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. At this moment, we do not have anybody that's raised their hand that would like to speak.
City clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor and Commission, the permit number for the record is number thirty-seven forty-four on that resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, most, item sixteen, sir.
Item number sixteen, Mayor and Commission, is referenced as twenty-one-dash-zero-three-seventy-eight, which is discussion and possible action to appoint two members to the police and fire pension board for a two-year term expiring in twenty-twenty-three. Item number sixteen.
Mayor, I'd like to move Jack McCloskey and Vicki Minow as the appointees.
Second.
Is it second by the Commissioner Cyphal? Discussion.
Yes, Mayor. Dr. May.
Who's that?
Schwartz.
Okay, Schwartz, go ahead.
Okay. Welcome back, Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna send a personal thanks to the hard work that Vicki and Jack have been doing over, over the last several years. And clearly, you know, the world has gone through a pandemic, and our first responders need to have some type of security, knowing that, that, that this group is looking out for the, for the best interest of, of everyone. I just wanna thank them for their service, and I look forward to their continued terms through twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. City clerk, do we call a roll?
Yes. Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Item...
City attorney?
Yes, Mayor. Number seven.
Item, item...
Addendum one.
Addendum one.
Thank you.
I'd like to make, make a suggestion or comment, if I could. What are we on? Item, add, addendum one.
If you, if you will, Mayor, may I read the items to the record, so the record reflects what the item is?
That's what you have.
And for the record, sixteen, of course, was, was taken up. Seventeen was previously considered and by motion adopted. Then, number one is referenced as twenty-one-dash-zero-four-zero-four. For the record, it's a motion to approve the findings and recommendation of the evaluation committee and to award RFP number AD-dash-twenty-one-dash-zero-one, Solid Waste Recycling, HHW, Bulk and Yard Waste Collection. Collection Services to Republic Services for regular residential solid waste, commercial solid waste, and residential recycling, and to Eastern Waste Systems, Inc., for residential bulk waste and yard waste mix, and to direct the city manager to negotiate a contract for services. Addendum one of the agenda for this evening. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, before we go on, I'd like to make a suggestion, City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm not really pleased with the whole bidding process that we're on with this, the two companies. Just it doesn't seem clear at some points with correspondence between all of us. This is a huge contract for all the residents of our city. While there are other carriers that also perform, I want to be comfortable with the largest hauler that we have in our city. So I'm going to suggest that we reject this bid and go ahead and ask the city manager to go back to Waste Pro and negotiate a contract that is good for all. If they can't, then we can move forward. But that would be my suggestion, City Attorney.
Mayor, are you making that as a motion?
A motion.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Seifel. Discussion.
Just, Mayor, if I may, Schwartz. City Attorney, is the mayor's, I guess, it was a question. I don't know if it was a motion, but it was...
It's a motion.
Is that doable? You provided this guidance before. Now we've gone out to the street.
If I may respond, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Yeah, we provided you some legal memorandum with regard to the process and the following of the city's procurement code, which you have in the context of this particular vendor relationship and vendor opportunity for solid waste collection. The end result of which is the city endeavored to follow the RFP process, did the appropriate advertisement, did all the requirements under the city's procurement code. If it's the mayor's wish and the commission's direction to reject all bids, it certainly, or proposals, it has the legal right under the procurement code and under the procurement documents to do so and to direct otherwise. To the extent that that motion would be legally in order and consistent with previous discussions of the commission, it certainly is an option which the commission would retain. To the extent that the manager and administration have other comments or other indicators of this conversation, happy to sense that for the record or provide that for the record. But legally, from the standpoint of your discussion, the Mayor and Commission could legally consider doing so. And that would be under the addendum and rejecting all bids, all proposals, and directing the administration to negotiate a contract with your current vendor.
Okay, so Mayor, I would just...
Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
I need some clarification. I had a self-imposed cone of silence. I haven't spoken to anyone up until this point here. Mayor, you said you were uncomfortable about the procurement process. If you could, I guess, tell us what your concerns are and how you drew those conclusions in order to make this motion.
Yeah, when the bids were coming out, we got notice, and then this one didn't have the right wording. We had to go back. It was confusing to most people.
Mayor, I don't...
Are you asking me my opinion?
Yeah, but I don't want you to use the word "we" because "we" doesn't include me. I did not have that information. So if you could, in detail, what was wrong with the procurement?
I'm telling you, I'm not satisfied with the bid. I want to reject it and go on and go out to bid, go out to negotiate with our carrier currently. That's what I want to do. It's a motion and second. You got discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz, are you done?
I don't know if my question's been answered, but I'll give the floor...
City Attorney, was the question answered?
I'll give the floor. Mayor, you responded, but I just don't, I don't have any more information than I did five minutes ago.
Okay.
The public deserves a right to know. If there is an issue with procurement that led you to this conclusion, I think the public has a right to know that. I believe that we received a letter, some email from the procurement director maybe two hours before this meeting started. It was quite lengthy. I have not had an opportunity to review that in detail, even discuss it with the manager, let alone the city attorney. So I don't know, I don't know. We may wind up in the same position of negotiating with our current vendor. That may be the case. But right now, I don't have any information. The public who are sitting here, they don't have the information of what the concerns are. If there's a concern about our procurement, I'm sure, you know, the Broward County IG would be really interested in that. That's the reason why we did not go out and just have a no bid to begin with. I'm not comfortable with that. So if there's something that needs to be put on the table, let's put it on the table. We can all deal with the same information.
All right.
That's all I'm asking for.
And you added to that, you added to that by saying you got a letter tonight you haven't even read.
Mayor, that is unfair. I received a letter at about 4:35 today.
Did you read it?
No, sir, I did not have an opportunity to...
Well, that's my point, Commissioner.
Mayor, if I can finish. I saw some information, and I have questions. Mr. Manager, did I speak to you after the email went out today? The answer is no.
The answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
So you're right, Mayor. You know, now, this is a $25 million contract. This impacts every single person who either does business or resides in the city. They deserve answers. And those who participate in the procurement process, you're damn right, they deserve answers.
Right.
Okay, there's some significant time, money, and effort put into the bid process. Listen, you know, this didn't happen overnight.
It's not the first time, right?
If what we need to do is have, is have a, you know, the manager, it's my understanding, was going to present some information to us tonight. Again, I don't know what his conclusion is. I received an email. We all received an email from the procurement manager. I haven't spoken to Mark Gomes. Has anyone else?
Nope.
Since the email came out?
Nope.
So, you know, let's slow this thing down just a bit.
I'm really slow.
Mayor, Seifel?
That's all I'm saying.
Commissioner Seifel?
Slow it down.
Thank you, Mayor. And the reason that I supported your motion, Mayor, I don't know anything that you were referring to about the procurement process.
Yeah, procurement is the wrong language.
I mean, that was, that's not, that was not my, my issue.
No, that was my fault, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. But that was, that was not my, that was not my issue or my concern.
That's right.
We, as electeds up here, have a responsibility to make sure that garbage gets picked up safely, timely, and at the best price for our residents and our businesses that we can provide to them, okay? And that's what drives, that's my driving force on asking and answering those questions. What I have not been able to, to fully feel like I'm comfortable with the information that I've gotten is because I have not truly gotten an apples-and-apples comparison of what is being provided, when and how it's being provided, the cost of providing that. And, you know, we all know that this whole garbage package is a very, a lot of layers. A lot goes into making all of this happen. You know, we've got, you know, we've got solid waste, we've got household waste, we've got bulk, we've got, we've got recycle, you know, there's just so much that goes into it. What I'm not comfortable with at this point is being able to say, I, me, I choose this company because, and I can't choose this company because. But I have not yet gotten where apples-and-apples to tell me that I want this company as opposed to this company. Comparisons that have been, that I have seen, didn't use the same base information to make the outcome on the comparisons. You can't do that. You have to say X is this here and X is this here. Y is this here, Y is this here. I have not gotten anything like that. So I'm not comfortable to say, you know, I like this one, I don't like this. Now, I don't want to say it like that, like I like this. I like this proposal, or I don't like this proposal, and this is why. And I haven't gotten that. So I'm not ready, Mayor, honestly, to say, you know, because this, listen, this affects everybody in this city, every resident, every business, everybody that comes to the city, it affects them somehow. And I'm not, I'm not ready to make, you know, based upon not having apples-and-apples comparisons. Somebody give me that. Give me that, and I'll be ready to move forward. I'm making a decision. But I'm not going to do anything until I am able to say it makes sense to me, and it's the best, it's the best proposal at the best cost. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that it always has to be the lowest cost, because I'm into not just cost, but what are you giving me for that? What are you giving me? Because sometimes I might be willing to pay something if I'm getting a little more, if I feel like I'm getting some real value from that. And I haven't gotten that. I'm sorry, I just haven't gotten that, Mayor. And that's what I'm going to need in order to move forward and be supportive with some proposal. And I'm hoping that perhaps if we, if we reject and go, and go out, that we might be able to have those, that kind of information provided to us in order to make, you know, an intelligent decision based upon actual facts, dollars, what you're providing, and when you're going to provide it, and how you're going to provide it to me. So that's where I am, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor?
Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is very awkward. It's awkward on many different levels. Before even hearing from people who are in the audience, we should, I think, listen to what the recommendation of our manager is before we start making motions, certainly motions of that caliber. And I just have, I have great difficulty with the whole enterprise. We sent staff at our direction to issue an RFP, having had legal advice that we could not renew and that the proposal for renewal from the, from the current vendor was difficult to process because there weren't any extensions and the contract was expiring. The legal advice was we had to go out to RFP. Okay. So we listened to the staff's RFP. The RFP was approved by this body. It has been looked at by, by the attorneys. Some correspondence was received. They were entitled to send that correspondence. That correspondence has to be reviewed. We have yet to even ask whether the correspondence is, in fact, legally sufficient to cause a discontinuation of the sequence of events which we alone could have and did authorize. Then you have this motion to reject the bids without a reason. I just don't think that there's legal sufficiency there. You can't just say, eh, you know what, I don't want to do it anymore, or I don't like this, or... There has to be a reason. It can't be arbitrary. It can't be capricious. You can't just say, because I said so. That's an abuse of authority. So what I'd like to do is postpone the vote and listen to what our manager has to say. Let's have the parties come forward and present. Let's get the information. And the last thing I want to do is explain, we, in the old days, we used to pick and choose who. Under the new ethics rules, we have a staff that serves as the committee. They have provided us with a ranking. If we have questions about that ranking, they're here to answer those questions. Those questions have not been asked on the record. Let's listen to what staff has to say, and then let's process this one step at a time because this is a highly complicated matter. Highly complicated. One of the most difficult decisions that this board has to make. And this commissioner wants to do it on the basis of fact. So I want to turn this to Mr. Dodge, if I could, and I know the Vice Mayor hasn't spoken yet.
No, we're in process, Commissioner.
Okay. But my process is, I want to hear, before I vote, I want to hear from the manager what he has to say.
Now, City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
A lot of talk there. I followed the procedure. There was a motion made, and that doesn't mean that we're not going to hear from the manager. That doesn't mean that we're not going to open it up to the floor for a comment. That's the process, correct?
Mayor, if you will, and Commission, it's a motion, it was seconded, and when you have a motion and a second, under Roberts' rules, you have discussion before you vote.
Thank you.
Let me clarify for the record, two things, if I may, just while you continue to discuss this issue. The motion before you is the recommendation from the committee on the RFP. There are two components to the motion, to this item before you, under addendum one. One is the suggested award to negotiate a contract with Republic, not to give them a contract, but to negotiate a contract with them, and also Eastern Waste Systems. They're two separate items in the same proposal. So they're legally distinct, but they're in the same motion for the purposes of discussion. One is for bulk and one is otherwise. So the motion that you made is certainly, under Roberts' rules, legally correct and procedurally correct, but it still requires discussion. And to the extent that there may well be discussion from your colleagues or from the administration or from others, that's an issue which is part of the debate and discussion before this item can be considered in whatever fashion. So it's not a rejection of bids, per se. It is, the motions before you, as drafted, you made a motion to essentially reject the proposal from the committee.
Correct.
The ranking.
So now, we're at the point where we're going to open it up for discussion and go to the city manager. Hold on. City manager for a report? City manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Actually, there's two items on this evening. The second item, which I thought would go first, is the month-to-month extension with Waste Pro for providing service until such time as whichever bidder has an opportunity to be selected this evening to negotiate with. The one item that the city attorney refers to is the bid on bulk rate or bulk collection. There were three bids.
Mr. Manager, excuse me. Point of order, Mayor. I don't have these addendums.
Yes, they're right front of you. They're on your desk.
Excuse me. I have one here that says, "Presentation, read a proclamation." I have a meeting agenda. I have a discussion of possible action for Waste Pro for six months transition. That's one.
And then there's a second one. That's the motion to approve the findings and the recommendations of the evaluation committee.
Addendum one and addendum two.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That's the one I'm addressing right now. And what I would like to... Excuse me?
Which one? Addendum two?
It's addendum, it's addendum number one, solid waste recycling. That's the one that was read into the record and a motion was made. I would like to make a distinction, as the city attorney has, that there are two items. And the recommendation of the evaluation committee was to award the bid to Eastern Waste Systems for bulk collection and distribution and for us to negotiate with them. So that is one item, I think, that needs to be taken up because they evaluated it. And I, I guess the second part of this, it, it is my understanding, and once again, I'll defer to the city attorney, that this process isn't one where the commission acts as the reviewer of the prices and everything at this point. It's my understanding that based on the findings of the selection committee, that the commission either accepts that or rejects that. So if, if you accept it, then you're asking the administration to negotiate with Republic, who was the vendor that was, uh, ranked and selected by the selection committee. If there is an issue with that and you need to reject the bids, that's a separate motion. And at that point, once again, if you reject the bid and the motion is to, uh, negotiate with the current hauler, uh, certainly whatever the commission, uh, decides and votes upon, the administration has to follow through with that. Uh, the presentation on this item has nothing to do with dollars and cents. The only item that we're referring to prices and, and cost comparison is on the Waste Pro contract as it stands on its own. What its previous prices were and what they are proposing for this period of time that it's going to take before a new contract can be put into place.
Question. Question, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ma- Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I recall you're telling us that we had to go to bid because we could not, um, simply renew with Waste Pro. And that's the reason why we went to bid, because the contract had terminated, correct?
If I may respond, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
In our memorandum, which is, which is, uh, published and is available, and we discussed, uh, our, our legal position, we strongly urged the commission not to do that in the context of then currently existing circumstances with the city, uh, and with other third parties who had looked at i- issues in the city. And the recommendation was that it would be a matter of policy to, uh, rebid or reopen the discussion for that purpose, and we did give that opinion.
Okay, so now-
We recommended it highly.
So now, if we were to reject the bid, your, your memorandum still tells us not to enter into a new contract without a bid. So if we were to reject the bid, while, while we have a duty to extend the contract and there's no one else in place right now but the current provider, we would have to go out to bid. We don't have the authority under your legal memo to enter into a new negotiation with the current provider. Is that correct?
If I may respond, Mayor. To the extent that the, that the facts today are different than the facts then, the difference is that you did go through a process that was not previously in place, which was you did go through a review, evaluation, and, uh, and, and procurement process, which had not occurred previously. So that is a factor that was not in place when, when we issued our opinion and when the commission elected to go back to the street for that purpose.
So, so, okay. So because those facts change, your, your, your opinion now is that we can go back and renegotiate with Waste Pro?
If the prevailing circumstances, all the, all of the compending, the facts and circumstances surrounding this particular vendor and this particular set of, of, uh, uh, facts, uh, would change your opinion, then you would be able to open the door for that discussion.
Okay. But in order to get there, don't we have to have a reason for rejecting the bid? I mean, it can't just be for no reason, right?
The commission, in the procurement documents, reserves the right to reject any and all proposals and it reserves that right unto itself as a public entity to make the right decision based upon all the facts and circumstances.
Point of clarification.
So we don't have to, so we don't have to give a specific reason for why we're rejecting a bid? We can just say, you know what? Changed my mind, that's it?
The prevailing facts and circumstances would dictate your answer, which are economic or otherwise or, or policy-driven in the context of making what you believe to be the best interest of the city. And in fact, there's a provision in the city's procurement code which allows for that, uh, decision to be rendered by the commission as policymakers, which is in fact for the best interest of the city.
Could, could, could the city direct the, 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 uh, um, the manager to, um, negotiate with both parties? The winner of the bid and the existing vendor?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think that that creates an, an unusual situation with regard to playing one against the other in the context of competitive selection. Um, and, and that, that would be, in my view, somewhat difficult to do and, and perhaps could be, could raise issues regarding fairness, uh, in, in the context of how you negotiate a contract.
Fairness to who?
Well, fairness to the, to, to those who took the time and effort to submit their proposals, but also to the mayor and commission and administration in making what it would be, would be, would be a correct decision in this, in this discussion.
Mayor, Cyple?
Uh, I'll get vice mayor first.
Okay.
Go ahead, vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am thankful to hear my colleagues', um, comments and, and processing this. This is, uh, this is good. Um, several meetings ago, we, when we were doing the workshop and we were talking about going out to bid, um, you know, at the time, there was the potential to take an offer from Waste Pro. And of course, that's when the attorney was giving us the advisement that, you know, you, you, you can't do that at this point. Uh, it was at that meeting that I had asked the attorney at that point that if have, that if, should we go through our fiduciary responsibility and we go out to bid and the results come back much more than what we expected, can we then take the opportunity to reconsider, um, negotiating with our, our existing hauler? And, and he had, he had given an affirmative response to that, which is what he is doing tonight. He's giving that affirmative response because we have gone through the bid process. And the whole point behind the bid process, as, as you have stated, Commissioner Cyple, is to find the best service and the best price. So, so we did that. And the results came back rather shocking. And, and I knew it then. I, I knew it was going to come back and we were going to, now, we're gon- we're going to now be hammering our residents with rates increase. It, that's what, that's what this bid did. It showed a substantial increase in the rates, regardless of which company you take. Doesn't matter. So now we're at a point here where, um, you know, we're trying to make a decision on, you know, whether we move forward with, uh, with, with the, with the, with the committee's recommendation or do we give the opportunity to the city manager to, you know, to negotiate a better service, better rates for our residents? I thi- I think that's, that's about the point that we're at. At least that's the point that where I'm at. Um, I like to give the city manager the opportunity, uh, to do, uh, what's in the best interest of the city at this point. Um, but, you know, responding to, um, um, the, the timing of information, uh, and, and what we received, I, I, I do agree that it's been rather rushed. And I didn't get an opportunity myself to do a thorough review, as Commissioner Schwartz has, you know, made reference to. You know, it's, it's, it's a lot. I mean, I'm looking at this, this is a lot. But, but I can just tell you, even still, just looking at it briefly, it, it is much more than what, what this city is enjoying today. So, um, I ju- I just want to say that, uh, that is a concern for me. I would like to be able, if, if we're going to consider what's before us, to have more time, uh, to review it. Um, but what's interesting is, is that we're really limited in time because we're almost ready to run out of a contract, right? And the contract, uh, once, once we're out of time, you know, we're going to be doing premium payments now in order to be able to continue the service. I mean, that's- And I agree. That's absolutely correct. Whether it's a week or two weeks, it's going to still be a delay that we're going to be subject to some sort of premium unless there is, uh, the opportunity for a negotiated, um, contract that can, that doesn't require a bridge, so to say. So I, um, I, I also, uh, am concerned about the fact that if we're in this process doing a bid, um, and then we reject it, and then the city manager does not come to terms. Okay? So, you know, what is, what does that mean, uh, for us? Um, so there's a lot of things that go on. And, and I think, uh, if I'm not mistaken, that the city of Plantation may have gone through this process a while ago. They've done exactly this here. They've gone out to bid. Uh, it came back, uh, a, a lot more what, than what they anticipated. Uh, they chose to negotiate with their existing hauler. You know, they, they rejected the bids. But, um, but when you do that, there's a lot of, there's some risk associated with that. And, and if I can ask the attorney to assist me with what the city of Plantation did in terms of being able to protect their exposure?
If I may respond, Mayor? Having seen the documents from Plantation, as the vice mayor described it, my recollection also is, is that in the context of the commission, the council there, reviewing all manner of facts and circumstances, elected to stay with their then-existing hauler, who I think was Waste Management. Uh, and Waste Management is a, in, in the context of a predicate to negotiating an extension and modification to their, uh, expiring contract, uh, they provided for what's called plenary, uh, or, or widespread indemnification to protect the city, uh, from any claim of third parties, uh, such as other bidders or thir- other third parties in the context of the process, uh, to proceed forward with, with the then-existing vendor. And that's what they did in Plantation in sixteen or seventeen. And that's, that's, that's a, a fact that occurred in that city. Uh, and they, they retained their then-existing vendor, which I believe was Waste Management.
And Waste Management provided them with the protection, is that correct?
The, the, the direction that the, that the council there gave, commission there gave was, that was a condition of the, of the, um, rejection of the proposals and to negotiate with the current vendor was to provide protection for the citizens and residents of that city by that indemnification.
So I, I, um, I, me, I'm, I'm leaning towards, I, I would agree to a, a rejection of bid and allowing a, a negotiations with their existing hauler. And, um, but so long as we're protected, we're indemnified against any exposure to challenges to that process.
Mayor, can I have a point of clarification?
Point of clarification.
But, v- vice mayor, are you suggesting that, um, negotiating with the current vendor sidesteps the bid process? Or are you suggesting that you do, that you reject the committee's, um, recommendation for, in this case, Republic? And direct the city manager to negotiate with Waste Pro, which was the number two hauler? It's a stark difference of throwing the process out versus rejecting the committee's evaluation because they were a point apart.
To me, to me, I, I, I see, I see this as, um, eh, from, from your view, that it's a risk that you're unwilling to take and you want to go with our hauler because you know what we have. I still don't have any idea what the issues are in procurement because right now, the public has what's in the backup, city manager. But I also want the public to read what you sent us at four twenty-five today. The public deserves to know what we have. And those who are in the audience deserve to know what we have before any vote is taken so that they have an opportunity to respond. So to me, um, yes, I have some questions based on some of the review, like Commissioner Cyple had said. But there's a, there's a difference. And, and, and for the city, city attorney, who I have, uh, great respect for, I still ha- I'm just uncomfortable just throwing the whole bucket of water out and say, well, you went out to bid. Well, I'd like to know what Mr. Scott thinks about that process. Because I don't think Mr. Scott is going to, um, believe that we just didn't go through this and it was just a, it was just a smoke and mirror. I, I don't, I don't need that. And if, and if it has the appearance of smoke and mirror-
What's your point of clarification?
My point of clarification is, um, if, if, vice mayor, good, if you could, if you could, um, sharpen the pencil and tell me what exactly, what direction are you suggesting that you want us to go?
I thought you were pretty clear.
So, but, but, but do allow me, that, those are good questions to ask. And allow me to, uh, be a little bit more explanatory in, in my process, my thought process. So, you know, I'm looking at the op- uh, at, at rejecting a bid based on the prices that came back. I, I, I do believe that this body has the right. I've seen commissions regularly reject bids because it came back way more than what they expected. That's the position I'm taking here. I didn't look at any of the documents, and that's one of the other things. If, if we go forward with this process, I want to look more at the documents. I'm not willing to make a, a, a decision tonight on, 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 on what the, what the, what the committee is making a recommendation because I didn't get an opportunity to review. So I'm not rejecting based on a review of any documents. I'm, I'm ma- making my position based on the fact that I believe that the prices that came back, regardless of which company it was, it, it exceeds what I believe that the city manager may have an opportunity to, uh, to negotiate. And maybe the best thing to do is ask the city manager. Does he think that there's an opportunity to negotiate better with the existing hauler? I don't know. I mean, is, is, is that worth giving to you as an opportunity?
Mr. Dodge?
If I was directed to do so, I would, um, make my best effort to negotiate, uh, a much lower and more reasonable, uh, price, uh, because at the present time, uh, uh, it's significantly higher. Um, I have a lot of questions on, uh, not so much what the selection committee did, but the price that was presented to us on a month-to-month extension, which added almost twenty-five dollars a month increase to the individual residential home. I think that's totally, uh, unreasonable. And that's another item. Uh, but as far as the selection, uh, you're going to have to decide and let me know what it is you want to do. And then I'd have to look at the vendor you select and, and negotiate from that point.
Okay. Point of clarification to the city manager.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
City manager. This body gives you the, uh, direction to negotiate with a vendor. And you come back with a price. That doesn't give this body, we don't have to accept that price. So what happens then, city attorney, if we can't come to an agreement based on the best dealings that the city manager came up with?
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond?
Please?
You're currently in a process. You're under the procurement code. You have a recommendation from the sele- from the qualifications committee, from the evaluation committee, which ranked the proposers. So all you have before you is the ranking. We know under the Broward County Ethics Code, you can't rerank them because you're not the selection committee. Only the selection committee itself can rank them. You can send it back for review by the selection committee, review committee, evaluation committee. But you don't get the chance under the ethics code to actually rerank them. And you are in the process.
And city attorney, the second option is to reject the evaluation committee recommendation.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, you, you, you could terminate the process, terminate the, the, the process that you've undertaken to allow the manager to have that conversation with the, uh, current vendor. But when you terminate the process, you've ended that process. There's, there's no, there's no other coming-
So, so the risk, so the risk that we're taking then to the attorney is the following. My understanding is the following. If we reject the bids-
Reject the ranking.
Yeah, reject the ranking. Then we have an expiring contract on the thirty-first of this month. So now we're into addendum number two, regardless. And we can certainly go out to bid again and go out to bid again and again and again and again. It doesn't change anything here. We have to have a vendor, and there's going to be a price. And certainly, certainly, um, everyone up here recognizes that there were provisions put into this bid package that certainly improves service levels.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly improves accountability. There's a cost to that. Certainly a cost to that. So, um, th- the, from, from my perspective, and I said it last year, rooter should have been done already.
Let's stay on some-
I'm just saying.
Stay on some-
If we knew, if we knew where we were, and, and the vice mayor has a report in, in a few minutes, if we knew where we stood on disposal, this would be such a more simplified process.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
But we're still got a conference.
And, and, and the manager, the manager is going to make his best effort, no matter what we do. But it doesn't mean, eh, eh, honest to God, it, it doesn't mean it's gonna, it's gonna get my support one way or the other.
All right.
You know, when the discussion comes up.
And then we'll have-
Mayor, Cyple?
Go ahead, Commissioner Cyple.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Um, colleagues, a lot of good points, a lot of good, uh, information brought forward. I, I'm, I'm still, I'm still kind of hung up on, um, I'm still kind of hung up on some information that I, that I was able to see through, you know, through some things that, how in fact the, the evaluation committee a- and, and, you know, I, I, I think they always do their, do their best effort. Um, and I don't want it to sound like I'm ragging at them. But, but in this particular case, if I have to rely upon their recommendation for me to go forward, I have to have every confidence in how they, um, achieved their recommendation. And I, and I don't, and I don't have that- And I, and I don't, and I don't have that, um, uh, I, I don't have that because I haven't been given that information that says, um, uh, for, for example, um, cost, well, if you do this, it's going to be, you know, i- it's going to be this and, and this is how we got to be rated, evaluated as number one because we were the lowest bidder. Well, it has not been proven to me that how they got to be the lowest bidder because some information that I had, and I, and I hope maybe someone can answer me on this that may, that I'm wrong, I'm, I'm hoping that I'm wrong, that, um, disposal cost was included and it should not have been included because that's a different issue that we're looking at. And that meant costs were up or costs were down. And so if that was the case, that's like a one, one example of if that's the case, if disposal cost was in, was in, included, that, that's not comparing apples and apples again because we're not, we're, we're pulling that all out. That, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be put into any of the numbers. So that's just like a one example, um, of how, and I, and I have a couple others, but I don't want to really want to get into all that. But that's, that's a pretty significant example that, again, how, how the committee came to lowest price, trying to get it, you know, trying to save our, our money. But if it's not based on the correct information, then that's not a good, it's not a good recommendation. For me, it's not a good recommendation.
Mr. Seifel.
So I guess those are some of the questions, Mr. Dot, maybe.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the city manager can answer a little bit of your question.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, if I could ask the city manager on.
Mr. City Manager.
And that's just, uh, uh, I mean, I have a couple others, but that's kind of a glaring one for me.
Sure.
How they were even, and, and I. Both companies have, have, I'm, I'm not ragging at any co-, either of the companies. I just have to have knowledge and understanding of where we're at so that when I go forward with something, I can, I can support it a hundred percent. So I'm asking for more info.
Go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, that was a, a last minute, um, letter that we received from Waste Pro raising that question. We responded to you in the letter today, uh, and we, uh, totally disagree with that. The bid as it was designed was specifically designed for the first time for all vendors to be able to identify what their collection cost would be, uh, what the disposal generation rate would be. Because we calculated the generation, we, we calculated that number based upon the generation rate they gave us. And it wasn't that far off. Uh, and then of course, there was a number for, uh, bulk and there was a number for household hazardous waste and a number for recycling.
Yeah.
The prior bid that we did many years ago, it was one number and it was never broken out. So we really never knew what was the cost, uh, to a homeowner to have collection. What is the cost for collection of recycling? What is the generation rate, uh, for the amount of recycling that goes in? We have those numbers today. Uh, we've evaluated those numbers from the, uh, facility, the router facility that gave us those numbers as how much waste was brought there, uh, by definition. So I would disagree with you respectfully, Commissioner, in that I don't think that is an issue. The, the issue right here is what is the collection rate? Uh, and again, the bid itself between the two vendors wasn't that far off, although one vendor, when you add everything together, was in fact cheaper. If you multiply it, I believe, over all of the, uh, services we asked for, it was probably two and a half to maybe three million. But the reason we did that is because every bidder, we had two waste companies, Waste Management, Republic, and then we had an independent bid by EWS, which is the company that collects our bulk. Ironically, or maybe not, both waste companies use EWS as a subcontractor. Our recommendation, uh, here basically, uh, the findings, I believe, would indicate rather than, uh, dealing with EWS through, uh, another party, it was much cheaper to deal with them directly. So our analysis says if it's two dollars less a household per month, it makes sense to contract directly with EWS, but we'd still have to negotiate with them. If you, uh, reject the bids this evening, that's fine, but I don't know how we then break that out to save that two dollars a month with either vendor. Because they have their administrative overhead for, um, monitoring it and doing what they need to do with their subcontractor. And that's why.
Point of clarification, if I could.
But my, my point is that I believe the process gave us an awful lot of information that clearly identified what the cost is for each and every single service that we never had before.
Okay, I heard Commissioner Seifel.
Yes, yes, point of clarification to, I guess, uh, uh, city attorney. The, the item that's before is, does, as you said, does have two components, two components to it.
It does, the motion does.
Yes, okay. And so my question, I guess, on clarification, kind of going along with what city manager just reiterated, that it's, you know, two, two separate services, two separate businesses. Is it possible at this point to, to break those two items apart and put them into separate items?
Mayor, if I may, the short answer is yes. They're only in, they're only in the motion because they were actually proposed together by the committee, but the end result of which is the commission has a discretion to divide them, uh, and look separately at, at each item, if that's the recommendation of the administration as well, to have a separate discussion on that issue.
I, I'd like to, uh, Mayor, if I, if I could, um, I'd like to know what my colleagues' thoughts are on, on at least first breaking these two apart because it seems like there's not so much of an issue on the one item as there is on the other item and what, what thoughts are.
Uh, city attorney, hold, hold on a second.
Yes, Mayor.
The pass-through, uh, shouldn't be unholy. It's, that's part of a different animal, we should include that, right, correct?
Well, you need to confer with the administration as to what the, what the, what the proposal said, but at the end of the day, this, the, the, um, evaluation committee segregated the recommendation, analyzed the information and the data with the appropriate interviews and recommended the two vendors before you, this evening, under that motion, under addendum one.
Okay, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Mayor, thank. I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Dodge, were you done?
Uh, I just would like to make one point of clarification before we finish.
All right.
Uh, the, the procurement director is available online. I'd like him to address regarding the RFP process that we presented to you, that we did in fact have that ability, uh, to be able to, uh, select, uh, a, a collector, if we may, for residential. We did combine residential and commercial as one bid, but it was separated for bulk, it was separated for household hazardous waste. Uh, and I, I would like at some point, uh, before we close.
Commissioner Castillo.
Mr. Dodge.
Thank you very much. Hold on, Commissioner Seifel.
But the re-, I, can I respond now?
Hold on, so hold, hold on a second, Commissioner Castillo.
I, I asked her to separate.
Well, but you, but then he took over, so just hold on. You know, it's a big subject here.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm hearing very many, uh, valid questions on behalf of my colleagues regarding this matter, which is of utmost importance. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we defer both items to a special meeting to be held next Wednesday evening. And this will allow the entire city commission to ask their questions of the administration of procurement. If they wish, they can speak to, uh, uh, other parties that may have answers for them. And then we can go at this from a point of view where we're not so much asking questions, but we're debating the issues based on facts. So I'd like to make a substitute motion that we call a special meeting to deal with addendum items one and two next Wednesday evening and move the agenda.
Is there a second? Your motion wa- ends, didn't, wasn't a second? All right, let me just say one thing, uh, city attorney.
Yes, Mayor.
This is the process and you have elaborated quite well and so has the manager. This is a big city. And when you have a COVID year, a lot of things happen to that big city. And we have a lot of, uh, trucks out there that our current hauler has provided our city with. EWS is another bulk, uh, operator that provided our city many years. I've been involved a long time. Our city residents want their garbage picked up and they want their, um, bulk picked up timely. So I just see, that's why my motion was tonight, to, uh, you know, bring that forward. But now I want to take and hear our audience real quick. Com- uh, Mr. Mackey from Waste Pro.
Mayor, before he.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mayor, before he comes up, um, and, and I also want to hear what they'll have to say, uh, you know, again. Um, I, I asked for, uh, uh, feelings from my, uh, from my colleagues on the concept of separating the two items and I didn't, I didn't really hear that we talked about that any, anymore.
If, if I could, um.
Okay, uh, city, Commissioner Seifel had an item, city manager, will you address that?
I, it, that would be a question for the city attorney if we're able to do so.
Mayor and Commissioner, if you, again, the addendum one is, is, is grouped together with, with both recommendations from the evaluation committee. Now, to the extent that they stand alone and can be stand, and they can be considered separately, they can be brought, they can be broken out separately and discussed in a separate fashion and/or proceeded with on a separate fashion.
Okay, Commissioner Seifel.
So according to the city attorney then, that, that we do have the ability to make, out of one item, make two items and separate the two out. Um, and I may make that motion, but, um, in, in, uh, in respect for everybody, I would like to hear the presentations from, from, uh, from the folks that are here and then we'll go forward.
Mr. Mackey, could you come forward, please?
You have to hit the button. Good evening, sir. Good evening. Uh, for the record, Russell Mackey, one seven three zero two Pines Boulevard, Pembroke Pines. Um, you, you know, this is a huge issue. It's a complex issue and, uh, you're all very right and there's been a lot of really, you know, good commentary on it. Uh, you know, obviously I feel very strongly that the best interest of the city is to negotiate with my firm and I, I, I've got some, some, some real reasons why. Um, first foremost, I strongly believe that we submitted the lowest price overall in the submittal. If you take the bid tabulation sheet that was, uh, used by the selection committee and you remove disposal, you can go into the cells and pull disposal out. It's not me doing any calculations other than removing disposal. It populates the number at the bottom and Waste Pro is three hundred thousand dollars less than Republic. So if the only thing that's left is collection cost, when you take disposal out, Waste Pro was the low provider in cost. Secondly, we park in the city. We collect in the city, we dispose in the city. From, from a green initiative standpoint, from a carbon footprint reduction standpoint, our trucks will travel thirty-five miles less on average than every ru- route that Republic runs. Uh, that's a significant impact on carbon footprint. Your selection committee ranked Republic higher than us, all five committee members in green initiatives. And I, just that component alone, had we gotten the same amount of points as Republic in green initiatives, when the very definition of green initiatives is the reduction of carbon footprint. We reduced twenty-one thousand driven miles in the city every month by using Waste Pro over Republic. They, they can't change that. They park in Water Hill, we park dead center in the middle of the city. That's something that can't change and it's an advantage that we have for the environment. We should have gotten more points than Republic in that category, not less points. That alone would have ranked us number one and, and there would have been a suggestion coming forward in front of you that says, move forward with Waste Pro. The final reason in the, and I, I really think that the biggest benefit, I've got two hundred and fifty employees that report to that Pemb- my Pembroke Pines operation every single day. We're a local business. We employ local residents. Got many of my employees, you know, that, some of them stuck around, a lot of them had to go to work. They, they start four o'clock in the morning, um, they spend their money in the city. You know, where do you think they get their breakfast? Where do you think they get their gasoline? Where do you think when they have to stop home to buy something on the way home, what do they do? That's a benefit that Waste Pro has that, that Republic doesn't. We circulate the money in the community. Secondly, these employees, there, there is a, a, a complete and utter shortage of drivers. And these, these employees love Waste Pro. They love to work for us and we need them. You know, i- if we were to lose this a, a, agreement, we would move our employees into Hollywood, Miramar, West Park, North Miami. They're not going to be available for the next hauler that's coming in. So there is a significant transition risk. There's a shortage of equipment. In North Miami, we committed to buying them an F-150 pickup truck, just a regular stock F-150 pickup truck. I'm two months late on getting them that F-150 pickup truck because it doesn't exist. Luckily today, I just found one in Terrebone, Louisiana, that we're working on getting.
Where?
Terrebone, Louisiana. I have no area, no idea where that is, but that's where we've been able to actually source one. You can say that you're going to rent trucks, you can say that you're going to have the equipment, because that's what your job would be to do, to sell the commission on, on the fact that you'd be ready. The reality of post-COVID is there is a shortage of equipment, there is a shortage of people. We have the equipment, we have the people in place and, and we're ready to continue on. We're ready to negotiate with the city, we're ready to put a good deal in front of you and, and, and take this really important service and make sure that your residents get the value that, that you're looking for. So, you know, thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
Any questions for Mr. Mackey? Any questions?
Sure, Mayor, if you, if you're.
Commissioner.
Good evening, uh, Russell. Um, first, I want to thank you for the last nine years. Um, this commission approved a contract, um, back in two thousand thirteen that was horrible on both sides. And there were multiple amendments and there was a lot of, uh, financial loss, probably on both sides. There was a lot of frustration probably on both sides. This bid process was supposed to improve that. Um, our job appears to call balls and strikes. We have to be a neutral party. Certainly, um, one of the questions that, uh, based on some of the information, Mayor, that I had reviewed, was carbon footprint. The city attorney is going to, um, provide this guidance on the Broward County procurement code of what we can actually ask committee members, or even if we can ask, I believe ask to go through the manager. But certainly if you have twenty-one thousand miles less a month and you only have two bidders that you're putting down, how in the world can you come up with the same ranking? That just doesn't make any, any sense. I don't care what bid you're doing. Now that being said, um, Mr. Mackey, uh, it was four forty-five that I received. It wasn't, I said four twenty-five, it was actually four forty-five. Depending on where you're on, are in this city, sometimes it can take you over an hour to get the city hall. Okay? So there's, it, it was impossible for, for, uh, for a, a, a document to come out this late to be, to have it reasonable that we're going to discuss the twenty-five million dollar bid with an hour and fifteen minutes before we're supposed to be here in the building. I mean, that, to me, that just doesn't jive. Um, Mr. Mackey, um, the, uh, the, the process, um, you did not, you did not submit a bid protest, is that correct?
Correct.
I, Mayor, I feel like I'm going to ask a question that's just like inappropriate, that's just going to cause more problems.
Well, don't ask it.
No, I'm not, no, I'm just saying, I'm, well, I'm try, I'm trying, I'm trying to be fair.
Good.
That's all, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to get the information extruded out of the administration. Why did, uh, I looked at the bid sheets, I looked at the bid rankings. Um, there were five members on, on, on it. Um, of the five members, our risk manager supported Waste Pro, our former procurement manager supported Waste Pro, and the other three members supported Republic. Republic. I don't believe, as, as an elected official under the code, I can ask those questions, why do they do that? I can only ask the manager. And I don't know if you throw the fish back in the water and send it back to the committee for explanations as to why. I don't know, City Attorney, if, if that, if that can even be asked, if you can provide some guidance, because I'd like to know how, how, how this was all formulated. I mean, we worked really hard on trying to break this stuff out. Now, Commissioner Seifel is asking about splitting the bulk off. It's not negotiating with the same vendor if you're negotiating the, the bid package that's in front of us. What part are you going to keep and what part are you going to throw away? I mean, we have to have a semblance of the rules. Like, you, you can't just change the game. Major League Baseball has nine innings, you can't have 10. We can't change the rules. Okay?
But bulk and regular pickup is separate.
But under our current vendor situation, we have a subcontractor situation. Look, we're not negotiating here on live TV tonight. That's the manager's job to do it. I'm just trying to call balls and strikes. And right now, I don't even think I have a ticket to the stadium.
How many streets you got?
I don't know if I have tickets to the stadium here, Mayor, because I don't know what game, what, what's happening. I just don't.
What are the reasons for my motion?
I don't. And, and, and that's the reason why, that's the reason why I'm uncomfortable with your motion, Mayor.
Okay.
Because I don't believe that we have all of the information.
Okay.
Commissioner Castillo wanted to have a, a meeting next week. I say, let's get it on tonight. I mean, we're all in the room. There is a lot of money in this room. There's, there's somebody, I'm sure there's plenty of attorneys on, on Zoom taking notes for, for everyone who's participated in this bid process. I just want to be fair. I don't want to screw this one up. You know, this contract goes well beyond any of us sitting here, any one of us sitting here. And, and ultimately, I tell people all the time, there's three things. In order to be an elected official in this city, you have to do three things. Your phone's going to ring three different ways. Where's my building permit? There's a pothole, and then my garbage get picked up. Those are the calls we get every single day. And by far, Waste Services is the number one priority, because everybody uses it every single day in some form or fashion. So we can't rush this thing. Russell, thank you for the information that you did provide. It certainly, it certainly gave me more, there's more questions that have to be answered. And in fairness to you, the administration has some disagreement. I'm just trying to call balls and strikes. So I need to hear from the administration before I can, before I can make that decision to be fair to you, sir. Thank you.
Good. And let me just say, on the administration, the motion in front of us is to have the manager go back and negotiate a contract with our current hauler.
Mr. Mayor, just to add some flavor to the conversation of the commission, which I think you need to get an answer to your question, thank you. Under the Broward County Ethics Code, the language says, and we've had this discussion many times in the states before, about your involvement with selection committees, with evaluation committees, which you do not and have not been engaged with since the code was adopted several years ago. The language very expressly says the following. Upon the completion of the selection process by the committee, elected officials may inquire into any and all aspects of the selection process and express any concerns they may have to their purchasing director or, where applicable, other employee with responsibility to oversee the procurement process. So in the context of what you're debating, discussing, and evaluating, you have the legal right to open up that conversation, except that you can't go back to the committee and tell them what to do. But you can raise the issue, or a set of issues or concerns, through the manager to that committee to raise the bar on that issue, if you decide to go back to the committee to have them reconsider their discussion and their decision.
So on, on that point, if I may ask the manager, and Russell, thank you, but Mr. Manager, when the selection committee did their interview process, how long did each vendor have to make their presentation?
Mr. Gomes is on the line. He'll tell you. I believe it was 20, and then they gave some additional time to both vendors. I believe, Russell, they gave you extra time because Republic, I think, took a little bit more. But is Mark Gomes on? Could you please respond to that?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. This is Mark Gomes, procurement director for the City of Pembroke Pines. Yes, the city gave the vendors 10 minutes to present and 20 minutes of question and answers. One of the vendors, we did go over by 14 minutes, and then we afforded each vendor the opportunity to give additional time to address any, anything else they'd like to address in their presentation.
Mr. Gomes, through the, to the manager, if I may. Mr. Gomes, there was a pre-bid conference. Did the vendors know going in?
Uh, yes.
Did the vendors know going in that they were going to have 10 minutes, and only 10 minutes?
Yes. It was, we, we sent out an email to the vendors inviting them to the meeting, letting them know that they'd have 10 minutes of presentation and 20 minutes of question and answers.
And when did that email go out, before or after the bid was closed?
After the bid was closed.
So wait, oh my God. See, Manager.
That's why my motion.
See, Manager, this, you, you, oh my, I, I, I'm-
Just say it.
Um, no, I, no, I, what I want to say is 10 minutes is unreasonable. For a subject matter like this, I think an hour has been tradition for, for $25 million contracts as far back as I can remember. If nothing else, I mean, I could just imagine that any, any, whether it's Republic or Waste Pro, they have a team of people who assemble probably phone books of information. And you have one person, I'm sure that was the point person, to make that 10-minute presentation. And I can't imagine that that one person knew what was in file number six, page four.
That's a discussion for another time.
But, but this is a part of the procurement that, that troubles me, Mayor, because the, the-
You were confused on my point, though.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, they, they were not limited. They were said, make your presentation. All the proposals were submitted ahead of time. The selection committee had all the time in the world to review those, and then they were to summarize it. If in fact they needed more time, we did in fact afford it. Waste Management finished within 10 minutes. I believe they came back up. I don't even know if you used the following 14 minutes. But we did not cut anyone off.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mackey, anything else?
No, just here for questions, if you have any more questions.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just, I just want to ask a couple, a question real quick. So I, I, again, I just want to stay focused on my point, which is, I, I did not look at any of the details of the bid. And so, you know, my consideration of rejecting and going, and renegotiating what is the current contract is predicated solely on the fact that the prices that came back out of all the bids are way high and intense. Nothing, so I haven't gotten any of the details, though, which, you got more of it out of it than I do, actually. But, um, but, but I, I do have questions, though, just real quick to you. So again, you know, if, if we do reject and ask the City Manager to negotiate, what are you able to do for us in the event that you cannot come to terms and negotiate a contract between you and the City Manager? Because currently, the contract expires in a very short period of time. Is there an ability to extend that contract in the event that there's an inability to negotiate that would give us the opportunity to rebid again?
Mr. Mackey?
Do you understand what I'm asking? And I don't know if you have the authority to ask this.
Yeah, I, it, it's a complex, you know, question, because there's two points to it. We are fully committed to going into really good faith negotiations and bringing back something that's going to garner the approval of the commission. And we understand that the timeline is here. We've always worked with the city. I mean, if we just go back to COVID, we have spent $1.3 million out of our pocket. We didn't limit services. We didn't do anything to cut services down to, did we get delayed on some services? Yes. But we, we went and kept on spending that money every single month because it was the right thing to do. So you can always count on us to do the right thing. We are at that crossroads where there are improvements that have to happen, equipment that needs to be purchased. Those are things that need to be contemplated in a short-term extension just as much as a long-term extension. But I can give you my commitment on the record that we, we're not going to leave the city hanging, but we're going to have to do something that makes sense for, for Waste Pro just as much as it makes sense for the city.
Okay. And, and, and you're throwing, you're right, you're throwing a lot of complications. And I'm just looking at, is there an ability just to extend time, you know, considering that there's reasonableness in, in what you just spoke to, not just reasonableness. Where, i- i- if we yield and give an opportunity, then we would like to see that reciprocated in, in a way that if there is, you know, for some reason, an inability to come to an agreement, that we don't sit there with an expired contract and we're totally at the mercy.
I, I understand and agree with you. And I, the, the chairman of the board of our company, John Jennings, if somebody is working with him, he's, I've never seen him not work in return. So again, that's a conversation that I would have, and, and I think we'd be amenable to, to, to obviously giving it the time to bring back something that, that makes sense.
And the, the other question, too, is, is, are, is, would Waste Pro be willing to indemnify the city as the attorney spoke earlier? Would, could you restate, I know that we, we talked about an indemnification against the city for any claims against the city for-
If I may respond, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, see, sir.
Globally, in the context of the plantation model, that's, that's essentially what the then existing vendor there did. I don't have the language in front of me, which I can find in a few moments, but the end result is that they had agreed that the current, the then current, then existing vendor agreed to provide that, that protection for the city regarding any third-party claims and all the other manner of defenses that would otherwise occur to protect the city, its residents, and of course, the, the parties involved in that discussion. So the answer was, that was part of that plantation model.
Mr. Mackey?
Yeah, I, I was part of that plantation process. I, I was there that, that evening. I, Amy Tingley, our attorney, here with us tonight, I discussed that with her, and we'd be fine, you know, making that a condition of the negotiation, that we indemnify the city, or we broaden the, the, the scope of the indemnification to the city.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I know, I just want to ask, though, it's not just for the negotiations, it's, it may be, I mean, in my mind, I'm just thinking it's precondition to making the vote here to reject and to go into negotiation, that the indemnification is agreed to in advance of that decision by this commission.
You have our commitment on that.
I'm good with my question.
All right. Anybody from Republic here? Want to come up? Name your name and who you are?
Matt Morale, 2850 North Andrews Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Can we take that mask off in here? Are you uncomfortable with that?
No, I'll be fine. My name is Matt Morale, 2850 North Andrews Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Represent Republic and represent Republic for-
Long time.
Thirty-some years, as part of representation of Republic and its predecessors, and have also represented previous other vendors you've had here, going back to probably 1984 or '05. During the course of that representation, anytime there's been an RFP or an invitation to bid, there's been a process in place. And what we've had here is a process that the city put, put out, put forth, where Republic was ranked number one by the Evaluation Committee, based on basically a $1.6 million difference in Republic's favor for the solid waste collection, and a $280,000 recycling difference from Waste Pro's offer. Waste Pro, for whatever reason, decided to skip the protest process and come in through a process I'm not that familiar with because of the cone of silence that's in place, where it's all been brought to the commission through a, basically a protest to the whole process by going through the procurement and the City Attorney. And that's outside of doing this a long time. You either file a protest because you, you have certain rights and certain protections, and you want to get a final reading on this, or, you know, you come up and throw yourself on the mercy of the City Commission at this meeting and make your presentation then. Typically, I've not seen somebody come forward with a letter a couple hours before the commission meeting that basically says, makes all these allegations, and doesn't have any real backup to it. You know, by doing that, they've avoided paying a bond. They've avoided having us respond to whatever their, their claims are by saying that, you know, for example, we have information on disposal generation rates. We have a response to that to show that we are, in fact, the lowest bidder. Republic's the second largest company in, in North America. They provided this service previous to Waste Pro. And if you'll recall, for the people that were here, when we provided the service, we extended on a reasonable basis to allow the transition. And when the transition occurred, we said, fine, we're out of the city, and that's why we're here today. We expected a fair process to be considered by the city in order to, you know, go forward with the recommendation of your Evaluation Committee. Let's see. Some of the things Waste Pro has said in their letter, which had a quick read on and didn't have a lot of time to put a response together, is they have the equipment available. Though the equipment isn't the equipment that you're talking about. It's, it's not three-year trucks or less. You're going to continue to have breakdowns, continue to have, you know, fluids on the streets. You're going to continue to have issues associated, the same issues you've had with Waste Pro during the course of this, that they're not going to be able to provide and meet the requirements that you put in the RFP. You know, the Green Initiative, they talk about the extra miles driven, but that isn't all of the items that are involved in the Green Initiative. I mean, just a small piece of what's involved in the Green Initiative is a program that Republic is the second largest company in North America providing these services, goes out and provides to the cities. And that was considered by your Evaluation Committee. And the reason maybe Waste Pro got the same scores as we got is because they had that advantage of the 30, the 21,000 miles or whatever it was. So, you know, as, as we look at this, they talk about their employees. We are more than happy to hire their employees that live in Pembroke Pines. That's not an issue. Republic has always been a good corporate citizen and part of the community when they come in. We've just, just kind of surprised that we've gone through this entire process, and these issues are brought up last minute. If they were brought up in a normal protest procedure, we could sit down, respond to them, have the city respond. You could have your information from the Evaluation Committee and their thought process. All those things would have happened if they would have gone directly to the protest procedure, which you have in your sta-, in your ordinances, and what really is the process for these things. Coming back afterwards and saying, well, you know, we, we could have been better, or we can do better after we've gone through this process. I'm not really sure that that's going to be the case. I don't know how you could be sure that's going to be the case. And so with that, I'll turn this over to Mr. Dixon from Republic Services.
Okay.
Okay. Hey, good evening. Good evening, Commander Commission. Um, just appreciate the opportunity to be here. I mean, we were honored to get invited to come here, um, as your highest-ranked vendor. Uh, my name's Randy Dixon. Um, my address here, our local address here, uh, for the Fort Lauderdale office is, uh, seven fifty-one Northwest Thirty-first Avenue, and we are in, um, Water Hill, Florida. But again, like I said, we were honored to be here. It's a great opportunity for us. Um, like, like, uh, Matt just said, um, our, our legal representation here, second-largest company in the United States, ten-billion-dollar company, um, we have, uh, the assets, we have the trucks, we have the people to come in here and get this contract started in accordance to the RFP specs. Otherwise, we wouldn't have bitted it, bid it. Republic's a traded company, have a great reputation across the country. I'm sure your procurement team did their due diligence, called our references, which probably has a lot to do with why we're ranked your number-one hauler. Um, again, as pointed out, we're twelve million dollars cheaper, twelve million dollars cheaper than your current provider on a service, um, that they're hit sitting here doing today. Again, we had this service from two thousand, uh, from two thousand to two thousand thirteen. We serviced it back in the nineteen eighties. Our company started here back in nineteen fifty-eight, so we're a local company that's made it big and made it into forty states and, um, across the country. We serviced twenty-four hundred municipalities. We picked up twelve million residences a week. Um, you know, what we've proposed here and what we've set, and what we've set out to do for your procurement, for you and for your citizens, um, is give you the best deal with the best environmental company in this county. Um, just from an asset perspective, again, we have, uh, just within the state of Florida, um, we have the ability to move trucks, uh, to get this hauling comp, to get this contract started. Um, we have seventeen locations in Florida, seven-hundred-and-ninety-four trucks in Florida, four-hundred-and-fifty commercial containers on standby that can be utilized in this contract, and other twelve-hundred commercial containers within the state of Florida that can be utilized. Um, again, expansive knowledge of this contract as we've serviced it before. Um, you know, what I, I just wanna point out that, you know, Republic Services, again, you're asking for a community partner here, and that's what we want to provide. We're one of the world's most, we're recognized as one of the world's most ethical companies. We're recognized as one of the world's best employers for women, and we're also recognized as a certified great place to work. We have a hundred-and-fifty-seven employees working in this county, some within this city, um, who are part of the Republic Services, um, team here. Look, as far as costs go, um, costs went up. Costs went up with your current provider, um, costs went up with us. It's a reflection of the market today. If you look at all the other bid activity going on within the county and within the state, you'll see the same, same trends of costs going up, whether it's us, whether it's Waste Pro, whether it's Waste Management, you're gonna see the same thing. So you put the service out the way you wanted it picked up to ensure that, that it was operationally sound, to ensure that service verification is done with your residents, um, and we've bid all that, we've specced all that, and we've provided you numbers twelve million dollars cheaper than your current provider. So, um, you know, there's no question we can do the job, uh, there's no question we can get it started whenever you guys are ready. There's no question we'll have brand-new trucks out there, um, by the time that, uh, um, that the contract gets started, we will comply with your three-year, with your three-year, uh, truck requirements, and, uh, are just really excited about the opportunity. Again, um, you know, it's, uh, we pick out a couple of opportunities every year that we talk about two or three years ahead of time, and, um, you know, this is one that's been on our radar. It's a town we wanted to be back a part of, um, it's a community we've wanted to partner with, um, for, for the past, you know, ten or eleven years that we've been gone, and we made it a priority to, to be here, a priority to bid this, and I think you see in our rate, we made it a priority to be your preferred provider. So, um, you know, with that, I'm the, the, the expert here today as far as our bid goes. If you have any questions about, uh, the specs of our bid, uh, the qualification of our bid, what kind of trucks we're running, how many routes we're running, anything you need to know, um, about, uh, what was included in that packet, I'm happy to answer it. I hope we get the opportunity to talk further about this because I truly believe we're, we're the best company in this county, we're the best company in the state to provide the service for you. Call our, call our referrals, I mean, call our referrals, ask how, ask your neighbors how well we do. Um, if you're looking for the best value, we've presented you the best value. Um, and, uh, like I said...
Yes, sir.
Any questions I have, and this is our general manager.
Thank you very much, Randy. Uh, I'm Jean Pierre Torgo, I'm the general manager for Republic Services. I've been sitting here, uh, listening a little bit, if I may. Thank you very much, John. Uh, and I, I couldn't just sit down and hear everything, and as the owner of, uh, the business unit in Barren County, okay, I think that you also wanna hear from me. Because, you know, when you hear from me, that's commitment, live, from somebody that you know what you know, that you can go to and have access to, just in case the service is not what we promised. The reason why I'm standing here, co- confidence, because, you know, I have a staff, I'm sorry, apologize. Yes. Is because I have a staff that goes above and beyond for me, for Republic Services, because the way we treat them. Oftentimes, I hear about different haulers not having the capability of providing the services. During the COVID, we may have been late exiting a city, one hour, but we provided the services every day. You know why my people come to work for me, and I, I have probably the lowest turnover out of all? Because I work for them. I'm probably the only, Republic's probably the only hauler in Barren County where mass vaccination happened for my drivers, at my request, from the city of Water Hill, which we do not even service anymore. Knowing how much I care about them, knowing how much they're devoted to Republic Services, they showed up, they sent the fire department to vacci- to va- mass vaccinize, okay, uh, fifty-eight to sixty of my employees, including myself. They came to work for me. I'm here to tell you, we're very selective. As a general manager, Republic empowers me, or go to, to, to go after contract that I feel that I can de- deliver the service promise that Republic's is known for. I don't go after just anything. I have Matt Moro here as our attorney, I have Randy, you know, from the area, they know, I don't go just after everything. We go after what we know that we can do. I'm a very proud person, so is my team. So therefore, it's, tonight, you know, I, I wanna leave you with one thing. Okay, know that, you know what, and trust in the recommendation of your committee. Yes, we went above that ten minutes. I'm the one who kept them above that ten minutes. You know why? Because I wanted to make sure that before they went back and make the recommendation to you, that they heard from the owner, myself, the general manager for Republic Services in Barren County. Rest assured, this is not, you're going on a limb. I, oftentimes, I use that because I, I used to work at NASA, uh, a long time ago. You're not going on a limb. You're betting on the best, and you're hiring the best, and we'll work hard to earn the trust and the trust of your committee that recommended us. I wanna leave you with that. Thank you.
Mayor, questions?
Mayor, staple?
Oh, I heard Commissioner Castillo first.
I'm gonna yield to my colleague, let her ask her questions, and then I have a substitute motion to make.
Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Moro, if I could, um, ask you. Thank you.
Cool.
Thank you. Um, could you just, uh, expound a little bit? You've talked a lot, uh, started to talk a little bit about the Green Initiative.
Yes.
Would you expound on that just a little bit more?
Sure. Republic has put together a plan, which is our Blue Planet, and it's a plan that's part of the submittal that we make with all of our bids and all of our responses. As part of this, as part of our bid, we did a biodiversity fuel, which is, um, we have CNG trucks, we do use CNG trucks, but biodiversity is an important part of what we're doing right now because Republic has, uh, made a commitment to the environment to start looking at and procuring electric vehicles when they become available in the size of the trucks that we have. So that's an issue that we are doing, uh, expanding the CNG facilities that we have. Would probably be better used, put, put that money towards electro- electric trucks. Um, as part of this, we talk about recycling and the, the sou- the solid waste issues that we have, um...
So you're, you're, you have plant, you have process now, your process is in place right now where you're doing stuff, but you're looking more to the future also for, uh...
The electric vehicles is a corporate initiative that we have in order to move this, the...
That'll be a few years, huh?
Pardon me?
That'll probably be a few years on that stuff, yeah.
But this contract is longer than a few years.
I hear you, I hear you. All right, thank you. That was, that was what I had, and I did have one other question, Mayor, if I could ask.
All right.
Uh, it's really kind of a, a point of clarification, um, and I, I think I'd like to ask city manager, although Mr. Dixon, was it Dixon or Hick...
Yeah, that's correct.
Dixon? Where's the accent from? I caught an accent.
I'm from South Orange.
Ah, gotcha.
All right, city manager?
Definitely not Boston.
City manager?
Okay. My, my question actually, I, is a statement that you made, I wanna make sure before I ask the question that I heard you correctly, that you said that your company was twelve million dollars cheaper than the current company. Was that a correct statement from you?
Based on the, based on the term of the contract, yes.
Over the entire term of the contract?
One-point-six million.
That's what your statement was, that it was over the entire term, not in, not the annual?
We, we calculate one-point-six million a year based on your calculation.
Okay, thank you. That's my question. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Castillo.
Yes, thank you. Um, as, as I look at these, uh, agenda items more closely, there is the, on Agenda Item Addendum Two, direction to the city manager that he proceed to negotiate a transition period with the current vendor. That has to happen under any set of circumstances. Then there's also the discussion that we had about, uh, bulk and, um, um, pulling bulk out of the rate, which would actually save the city some money. I don't think anyone has a concern about that. So what I'd like to do is make a substitute motion directing the city manager to proceed with the renegotiation and the transition and the award on the bulk, and that with respect to the bid, that we postpone that decision until a special meeting next Wednesday. So that commissioners can ans- can get all of their questions answered.
Is that the same motion you just had before? I'm gonna re-...
No, it's a different motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I, I'd like, I'm sorry, there was a lot in that motion? Could, would you like restate it again?
Okay. So what I was saying was...
Just so you know, I, I can't do next Wednesday, that's...
That's it?
Would you like another day?
Yeah, I, next Wednesday cannot happen.
Well, that, that's the point of, that's the point...
I was asking the vice mayor, would you like another night?
If, if that works, if, if this moves forward?
You know, let, hold on. Hold on.
Next Wednesday is...
Hold on. City attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We are in front of an audience in Pembroke Pines.
You are?
Okay. Why do we, we, the, the motion I made, and it was seconded, was that the manager go and, and negotiate with the former carrier, Waste Pro. And then we went on to discussion. Now, we have another substitute motion about having another meeting, maybe Wednesday or so. What will that accomplish? I think you just can't go in a week. This has been going on for a long time.
Mayor, if you feel conflicted in this, you should pass the gavel.
No, not at all.
Okay.
No, no, I'm making a substitute motion. Excuse me, excuse me, I'm not done yet. I'm asking a question to the city attorney.
Okay.
Good. All right, city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the, the texture and tenor of the motion of Commissioner Castillo is not inconsistent with the main motion. It, it, it is still in connection with the main motion, and it is not out of order, to the extent that the, the request, as I hear it from the commissioner, is to direct the manager to, uh, open negotiations with Waste Pro on the extension, that's Addendum Number Two, um, to essentially award the, the bulk, uh, contract to EWS and to postpone a decision on the other part of Addendum One, which is the item regarding, um, the, the main waste hauling contract.
Well, my motion, that I passed and seconded, says that we direct the manager to go and negotiate with our current hauler, Waste Pro.
As a, as a company...
And that's at a table.
No, sir. Your, your motion was to reject the bids, and I further said that the manager go back to the former carrier and try to negotiate a, a better contract. My, my, my substitute doesn't reject the bids.
Well, I didn't, I don't care about your say- you're saying, I didn't say it, I know I said it. Want, want the clerk to repeat it?
You did say it.
What's that?
You said reject the bid.
I did, and then I went on further to have the manager go back to the former carrier and negotiate a contract. I, that's what I said.
You, you, you're just not following the motion that I'm making. I'm making a substitute motion. I think the, I think four of us get it.
Okay. Well, I, I usually get it pretty good on there.
Okay, well, please, please try to listen to what I'm saying again.
I will, I will.
Okay, I'm making a substitute motion directing the city manager to negotiate an interim contract for, uh, until, uh, uh, a, uh, under, I guess it's Addendum Number Two, Vice Mayor, right? The transition contract. Then, I'm al- the second part, the second part of the motion is to award the eastern bulk piece that no one disagrees with, it saves the city money, and that we call a special meeting to, so that, so that commissioners can get their questions answered to discuss whether or not we wanna reject the bids. That's my motion, that's my substitute motion.
All right, is there a second?
Excuse me, the vice mayor is talking.
What's that?
The vice mayor is, is talking. So...
Vice Mayor, don't talk.
Did, did you get, did you get, did you get, sir, did you get my substitute motion? Did you hear it?
I, I, I believe I understand it.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I have a technical question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So I, I just, uh, I, I need to ask the city attorney, um, that if, if we bifurcate the bulk versus everything else, and we accept the bulk, does that mean that we cannot no longer reject the bids?
City attorney?
What was the question? I, I could barely hear you, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry. So, um, because, uh, this bid went out and this is the recommendation from the committee, if we accept part of it, are we able to reject the rest of it?
Yes.
And send it... Okay, I, I was just asking the attorney that.
City attorney?
Based upon my understanding of the RFP and the RFP process and how the evaluation committee reviewed this matter, and bulk was segregated as a separate issue, it could be separated, if the commission would choose to do that.
Right.
And, and, and...
And the bids can be rejected.
The answer is that the, the, the motion in Addendum One simply lumped them both together, but the recommendation from the evaluation committee was separate, so the end result of which is that it could, you could do that. And rejection, uh, is rejection of the, of basically of the proposals and the process, but you would accept hypothetically the proposer from EWS, if that's the intention.
And, and, and the, the other part of my point was with, uh, the, this talks about the interim. Mine says go back and negotiate a contract with the former carrier. That was my motion that got a second. This substitute motion says just in the interim. Now, we didn't take up seventeen...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just help to correct the record, your, your motion, if the, the clerk can read it back certainly, but, but the end result of which is, if you reject the proposal, if you reject the recommendations of the evaluation committee under Addendum Number One, you then, you then also reject not just Republic, but you also, you also reject eastern waste.
Right.
You reject them both. So unless your motion were to be amended to bifurcate or to, or to segregate the two, your motion to reject the, the recommendations of the evaluation committee and the proposals includes both.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, we have actually two items in front of us, Addendum One, Addendum Two. We actually have three issues in front of us, and they're separate. Addendum Two is specific on, uh, a, a six-month transition period, which, which we, we need, we need to, we need to move, we need to move on that because no matter what else happens, that has to happen.
Right.
The, the, the Addendum One is the two, is the two parts, and as city attorney just said, um, because they were reviewed and rated by our selection committee separately, we, even though they're listed here in this one item, we actually can separate them into two items to vote on each one individually and how we're gonna handle that. Is that not correct, city attorney?
May I respond, Mayor, to the commission and to clarify?
City attorney?
Uh, our deputy city attorney, Mr. Horowitz, has cited to the RFP document specifically on under section three-point-two-four, the title of that section says reservations for rejection and award, and the language in the RFP to which each proposer has submitted their proposal says the following: "The city of Pembroke Pines reserves the right to accept or reject any and all bids, or parts of bids, to waive irregularities and technicalities and to request rebids. The city also reserves the right to award a contract on such items or services the city deems will best serve its interests. All bids shall..." All bids shall be awarded to the most responsive responsible, et cetera. So there is a provision within the document that allows for the commission.
I think my motion directed it.
No, it did not.
City attorney, did my motion direct that?
Your, your, if I may respond, Mayor. With due respect, Mayor, your, your motion rejected the proposals in addendum one totally, which is both the Republic proposal and the EWS proposal. If you, if it be your wish to reject them both, then your motion was accurate. If your objective was to segregate them, then your, your motion needs to be tweaked a bit.
Mr. Manager, question you.
Yes, ma'am.
Two carriers, EWS and Waste Pro.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Two carriers.
Yes.
EWS and Waste Pro.
There's three, and Republic.
Two carriers I'm talking about right now, which you just said. EWS.
Right.
And, um, Waste Pro.
Okay.
So now my motion was to encompass them together. In your opinion, as a negotiator, should I separate EWS and just go after the contractor for, uh, the garbage?
Well, based upon the, uh, the, um, selection committee, the recommendation, uh, certainly, uh, would be for EWS because it was the lower price for bulk.
Okay.
So, Mayor, if I, Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Um, perhaps you could revisit your motion and, and, um, um, on the reg-, you know, the, um, if you're still looking to do a rejection on this, on this item, that's clearly up to you, but perhaps, um, that it be only for the, the, the one part and that you separate out, um, the EWS as a separate item to be, to be handled and voted on.
I'm not following.
City attorney, I'm not disfavouring that, but what does that do to the process and my motion? In other words, I made that motion inclusive. Now, if we segregate, as Commissioner Cyphus said, EWS, then the motion would refer only to go into Waste Pro and negotiate with that former carrier.
May I respond, Mayor? I think if the, if, again, your motion is, it, it covers both items in addendum one. It includes both proposals. The one referenced as, uh, Republic Services for regular residential solid waste, et cetera. And it also references Eastern Waste System, which are two separate, separate evaluated items. Your motion would include the rejection of both and a rejection of the proposals from both as, as mo- as made, unless you would choose to change that to segregate the two or to either ways bifurcate them.
Well, and I made that motion with the thought, President, that the manager go back and negotiate with Waste Pro, our current carrier, to see if he can get a better deal. You heard them commit to it tonight. Now, there was no big protest, but we've heard a lot of discussion up here about some confusion.
But Mayor, if I may?
Hold on. This is a big item. And we're not gonna do it in one day or two days. Takes a lot of work. Mr. Manager?
If, if I may suggest something, I don't know what the outcome is going to be of your motions, but it might make it a lot easier for whatever negotiations or whatever you decide if in fact Waste Pro would agree to extend for a two-month period so that we would meet in August uh, to maintain at the current level we have, the collection of waste in the city at the same rate that we have. And during that period of time, we then would still have to negotiate an extension, but it would give us a little bit more time. I cannot, I don't know if we can get this done by the first meeting of June or the second meeting of June. So if they would be willing to leave everything to status quo to our first meeting in August during that period of time, we would be able to negotiate an extension further than that because it's my understanding, and I think Republic at this time uh, could probably provide us also with an answer because I believe it was the gentleman, Mr. Dixon, said you have equipment all over the place, but during the process of that selection, we were told that you needed at least six months to get equipment in place. Are you saying now you can do it sooner than that?
Well, well, let's get the first question.
Well, what on the?
City manager, let's get the first question from Mr. Mac.
Well, I think the two kind of go together. Go ahead.
You heard the manager's question?
Yeah, it's similar to the question that Mr. Good, uh, Commissioner Good or Vice Mayor Good already asked, and it's, it's, I, it's a complex question. We, before the RFPs were submitted, gave a price to extend for a short-term period. Asking Waste Pro to change or, or honor a, 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 a price after we've honored the, the, the contract that's obviously stale and it shows from the market rates for a longer period of time, without the commitment that we are going to have the real ability to stay in the city through a negotiation of a long-term contract is not something that we'd be willing to, uh, commit to.
Okay, I, I understand. Mr. Dodge, you make a good point.
Okay, I understand it. The answer is no. So we just have to go through the item that Commissioner Castillo has mentioned as far as doing the renegotiation.
I'd like to hear from Republic.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to hear that answer.
My, uh, the, the question I re- I posed to public, Republic rather, is that you said you needed, uh, six months, and I know it was nine months for new equipment, but how soon can you gear up if in fact you were selected?
For the bid requirements, year one meeting, your three-year truck requirement?
Mic, mic, microphone, microphone, sir.
I, I hear you.
Yeah, in the, in the, in the time that you've allotted to start up the contract, we will comply with the truck requirements of the three-year startup, yes. That's not a problem. To get the new trucks that we will have here permanently, we are on a nine-month lease.
So what is that period of time to do a startup?
Uh, the last one we did was in four months.
Microphone, please.
The last startup was about four months in Palm Bay, Florida, similar-sized startup.
Alright.
But that's quick. That's, that's tough.
Let, let me just say.
When was that?
The RFP had six months as, as part of it, and that's what was originally planned. Now, uh, an alternative concept here is there, they seem, there seem to be questions about our service and what's available. We've been limited by the cone of silence, be able, provide information to you to be able to make you comfortable both with Republic Services.
The cone of silence is gonna apply to us.
No, no, it, it.
It applies to staff.
Yeah, not us.
Not us. Sir, continue, please.
We have avoided going to staff and coming to the commission because there was the understanding that this was supposed to be a process where there was a cone of silence. And if we're mistaken on that, that's our bad. But we are willing to come in and talk to everybody and attend Mr. Castillo's meeting next week and provide the information you need. Happy to do that.
Okay. Mr. Dodge?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dixon, I'm with Palm Bay.
You have a motion on it.
I have a motion, yeah.
I, I, I still have questions. I'm what?
Palm Bay.
We started Palm Bay in October of twenty twenty.
Okay, uh, i- if, if I may, Mayor, Palm Bay is nowhere close to the size of Pembroke Pines. My mother-in-law lives in Palm Bay. I'm there frequently, okay? It's not a hundred and seventy thousand people. It's not even remotely close to that. Okay, so what we have concerns at this point is this jacked-up extension of a hundred and twenty-nine percent offered by the current vendor that frankly I can't support. Can't support it because the residents don't support it. And I've already told the manager that. I told him that weeks ago when, when that, when that came out. When the manag- the manager sent us a half a phone book of, um, of response with a hundred and twenty-nine percent increase. Now we talk about market. You know what? When you sell a house, someone on the block has to sell their house more for the rest of the block to go up. Market rate is set by the vendors. That's who sets the market rate. Not the residents, not the commercial, not, not, not the property owners doing camp. They're beholden to whatever the major vendor set, and then someone's gonna be next, and that's how rates go up. I get it.
That was why I made my motion.
We have, we have our current vendor last fall testified that they were not going to extend, and that's exactly what we heard today. And, and, and they're honoring their word. They're not going to extend. And to, and to ask them to do that is, is, is quite funny. It, that, that's unfair as well. It, it really is. Um, Waste Pro provided the, the administration, administration provided us the notice that they, that they declined an extension. Okay, so now what we have is a discussion about equipment. The bid was six months. We have a no-bid letter in the backup that says there's no way that they could get it in sixty days, therefore they pulled out. Um, we have testimony tonight saying that you have to go to Louisiana to get three tires. So, being the large company that you are, why is it so difficult to get trucks? Why is it so difficult to, I understand time and capital purchase and, and, and meeting Wall Street's data, right? But at the end of the day, this is what our residents want. They want the trash picked up. They don't want hydraulic fluid all over the streets. Now, Waste Pro, if they were given the contract, they would also have new trucks. But, um, some of my research indicates that you can't get trucks because of the, of the global crisis on chips for engines, and we have the steel issue and all the other things that are going on. So, fellas, can we just get the information on the table tonight? How long is it actually going to take? If, if this administration, if this commission awarded you the contract right now, when do your trucks roll on our street? When do the new ones? Not when you want it to, and I'll ask the owner. Come on up. Okay, because ultimately, if this commission approves, you're gonna be the face of the company.
Certainly.
Okay, so my question is, what is Pembroke, what's Pembroke Pines going to expect? When does the new truck roll out? Because Waste Pro, if they were, if they were given the extension, they would have a built-in capital purchase that they could figure out. I'm not negotiating with you tonight. I'm just asking a question. When would we have trucks? And here's the other question. How do you fill jobs? Anyone can offer you a job, but certainly those who already have jobs can decline them. So there's absolutely no guarantee whatsoever that any of Waste Pro's employees are gonna say, you know what? We'll drive for you. There's no guarantee for that. So what is the plan? I understand that Margate's on the table. So you can deal with that, I'm assuming that you're also Margate, right? So now you potentially have two cities combined probably five times as big as Palm Bay as far as service levels go. How are you gonna make that happen? See, I've got transition pain that I'm.
Well, let's get an answer.
Well, I'm just, I'm putting it on the table so I can stop talking, Mayor.
Good.
Because transition costs right now is, is a, is potentially a six-month extension at a hundred and twenty-nine percent, which means that our residents get jammed, which means I have to ask the manager how much money he's gonna take out of the reserves so no one sees a dime of increase. You have the floor, sir. When can you, when can you deliver equipment and when can you deliver people to drive it?
First of all, I think that many times, okay, based on the response that we provided to you, we give you a timeline. And I'm here to tell you that we can adhere to that timeline. We're not gonna deviate from that timeline. You asked, even Commissioner Syphus asked, and Randy Dixon came back here, you know what he told you? Okay, I don't have a problem with that. I know that we can deliver on that expectation. Second, which, which we're not, we have not talked about, okay, is the hiring process. Starting Monday already, not having any commitment from anyone. My, my, VU F N C, Mike, Mike Isopolis, we already voted on the budget, okay, you know what, we're gonna have radio spots, okay, in several radio in West Palm, in Fort Lauderdale, and in Dayton. I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, you're sorry. I apologize for not speaking to this directly. And besides that, I'm here to tell everybody that, you know, I'm the president of Chamber of Commerce for all Asians in Fort Lauderdale and West Palm Beach. I'll get drivers. Let me say this. When I have to deploy other members of the Chamber of Commerce, we, we, we have access to those people. I speak several languages to tell you, you know, what, whether it's Spanish or whatever it is, you know, I'll go everywhere, you know, what, as a general manager, giving comfort to people, okay, to enjoying Republic Services. We have an elaborate process, okay? As a matter of fact, yesterday, my head of HR was meeting with HR from headquarters, preparing a plan, okay, just for that. I'm not waiting. I'm not, I'm not waiting. I mean, if someone has more questions and you go to that, the details, I can assure you that, you know what, I can have my HR person with every single detail on how we plan on getting people here. I reach out to commissioners. Right now in Lauderdale, if anybody talks to, to the, 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 uh, uh, city manager in Lauderdale, ask her if she doesn't have a poster or something that, you know, I jumped here and sent to her ahead of time, okay, to, you know, to, to, uh, to tell people in our, in our community. If you call the county right now, people in the county, and I'm not gonna use any, anybody in the county's name. I reach out, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not shy. I reach out to people high and low.
So, so in summary, what I'm hearing is?
Yes, sir.
Is that we have a bid. The contract terms is within six months. It won't be any sooner than that. That's what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Okay, delivering is less than six. So now, Mr. Manager, what we have is no less than six months in transition. That's what we ha- that, that, that's what we have. And that's a decision that, that we have to, that we have to figure out. Waste Pro, certainly, um, I find that addendum one and addendum two to be somewhat in conflict with each other because why would you have a transition? Why would there be a need to even negotiate a hundred and twenty-nine percent increase? If there, if there's, if there's essentially no change, Mr. Dodge?
Well, if, if I may.
Mr. Dodge first?
I think Commissioner wants to speak.
Because if, because if the, if the, if the extension was for three.
Hold on, forty clarification.
If the.
Hold on, please. Forty clarification.
So, so the, the, the number that was provided by, by Waste Pro includes bulk. It includes, um, the, 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 um, the fee. What, what, which fee was it? The, the, um?
The, the, uh, the proposal that?
The dump fee, is it what?
The tip fee, what?
The tip fee.
What?
So, so if, if Charlie pulls out the tip fee from the, from the, from the bid and pays it directly, which he's entitled to do because that's what the, that's what the RFP allows, and if he pulls out the, um, um, the bulk because he's entitled to do that, we're not looking at a hundred and twenty-nine percent anymore. We're looking at a very different number. So, all of that would be subsumed in terms of what the city manager can do in a renegotiation. Just because that number came forward, that doesn't mean that that, if, if that number wasn't subject to some change based on things that we could do, there wouldn't be a need to renegotiate. We'd have the number. So, what I'm hearing from my colleagues is we don't really, we don't really have a problem because we understand that at least over the short term, there's gonna have to be a re- uh, a, a, an interim contract with Waste Pro. We understand that. All five of us get it. We also, all five of us get that it makes sense to move forward with the bulk provider because the bulk provider is less expensive. Where we don't have enough answers to the questions is should we or should we not terminate the balance of the RFP? Forget about what date. I picked next week because I think a week should be enough for administration to answer and satisfy every question that any commissioner on this dais might have. If you said to me it can't be until the following Monday, fine. We can pick a date. We don't even have to pick the date tonight. There would, the manager can do that as well. Let's simply move what we can move, ask the questions, and then come back to this at a special meeting. There is no urgency to cancel the balance of. There is no urgency to cancel the balance of that RFP tonight. Once we do that, it's over. The only other thing we can ever do is re-RFP, and that will take seven to nine months to do. Why would we play that card when we don't have to tonight?
Mr. Attorney.
So, that's why I've made my substitute motion. We don't have the answers to the question.
Vice, uh, Vice Mayor?
If, if I may, I, I, I don't know that maybe we, we can't get something done tonight. I'm just, you know, I, I, we're actually making progress tonight. Um, but before I, I, I share all the details of where my head's at, um, I ask the city manager, what is the current percent increase on the bid that's in front of us tonight?
Same idea.
What's the, what's, what's the percent increase on the rate, the residential rate?
You mean the, uh, the bid as, uh, submitted by the vendor selected by the, uh-
Let's just say we went with the bid tonight, the low bid. What's that percent increase?
Recommended, not selected, please.
Excuse me?
Recommended.
Yeah, recommended.
Thank you.
Uh, Mark Oms is on. He has those spreadsheets in front of him. He can tell you. I, I, I do know that what was stated earlier by Commissioner Castillo is that, yes, the proposal for the extension was a hundred and twenty-nine percent increase in the collection fee and the disposal fee. We can pull things out and award it for a little bit, but even if we pull the tip fee out, we still have to pay it, but not through that vendor. So, uh, Mark, are you on the, the line with the, um, the number? Um, actually, you have them for both vendors, the, the one that was selected?
I just want to deal with the lowest number.
The lowest number?
If the current rate is twenty-five dollars a month, what's the new rate on this bid?
And then I, I, I would like to know what's being negotiated if that-
Well, nothing is being negotiated at this point.
No, I understand. Mr. Dodge, clarify, what is it that you're going to negotiate? If there is a bid for price, what else is there to do, sir?
Okay.
Let's hear the numbers.
The, the first question that was asked was about the extension. Are you talking about the extension?
No.
Are you, you're talking about the bid?
No, I'm just asking, what is, if the bid that's before us, the low bid, what is the percent increase? We, we heard a hundred and twenty-nine percent right now for the extension. All right, we already know that number. What's the new bid percent increase over what's existing?
Okay, Commissioner, you're making this a little bit difficult for us because in our negotiations, we have an opportunity to pick and choose what we're going to award. For example, Mark, the collection fee-
I, I-
If I, if I may, Commissioner, let me, let me finish. Because my understanding of what I would make a recommendation to the commission would be, is that whoever is selected long-term for this, that the city would be, uh, paying the tip fee. So, when you look at the low price, we would have to look at what we believe the true generation rate is, and then we would have to add to that the collection fee that either one bid on, and according to the selection committee, for the collection fee, it was Republic. And then, if you, we would be recommending that the bulk go to an individual, a separate vendor, which is about two dollars cheaper than from both of those other companies that they bid it. We are recommending that household hazardous waste be completely removed from-
I, I don't mean to interrupt. I, I understand-
I can't get, in other words, I'd have to go through the, depending on what we negotiate. I can tell you what it is for the extension, but I can't tell you what that final number would be until we sit and negotiate.
Okay, so, like, again, like I said, I didn't see, but I'm, I'm assuming that there's a rate that was provided to us because there was a one-point-six million dollars cheaper, some numbers existing. So, if the extension, assuming the extension is still for full service, right? What would be the full service cost-
We can, we can give you that.
Based on this bid that we have right now?
We, we can give you that. Mark, would you-
That's all I needed. That's the apple-to-apple comparison.
Okay, Mark, would you please provide that full service number for Republic and the other one for Waste, I'm sorry, Waste Pro?
Just Republic, just the low, the low bid. Just the low one. What's the low one?
So, uh, the, uh, so, so Republic's, uh, rate is approximately eighty-six percent increase, uh, and obviously, we're talking about, uh, Waste Pro's, uh, extension rate, which was about a hundred and thirty percent increase.
Okay, thank you. So, you're saying that, uh, let's just say we didn't change any of the service of what the hauler was doing, it would, on, on, on the transition or whatever, it's a hundred and twenty-nine percent, but under the new, under, under the recommended, uh, new contract, it would be eighty-six percent. So, is that correct?
It is, but-
Like, full service, eighty-six percent?
It is, but it would never end up being eighty-six because of the way that we would-
All right.
The way we would handle the contract.
Okay, very good.
By pullouts.
Okay, so it's, it's eighty-six percent. Um, and so, th- this is where I wanted to go. Um, we seem to have finally figured out this whole thing, at least with the bulk. We like the bulk. It's the, it's the better rate. We can separate that, bifurcate it, and now we're just focused on the two contracts. Now, um, I introduced, uh, you know, I, I am in favor of, of, um, of, of rejecting those bids and allowing the city manager to negotiate. But though, there were conditions. One of the conditions was to indemnify us against any claims. We had, uh, Waste Pro, uh, Mr. Mackey stayed on record that they would do that. So, the only thing that was left, left out there was, well, if you get into negotiations and you can't get to a, a, a lower rate, can you give us an extension that allows us to go back out to bid? And, and the answer was, well, it's complicated. So, I'm going to try to uncomplicate this for a moment and see if Mr. Mackey can agree to this. So, we just, we, we, we understand that current transition rate's one-twenty-nine, whatever, and then you said, of course, that there's, uh, you know, uh, your, your, your company head was, uh, willing to work with us so long as there was a guarantee. But again, I'm still focused on us not get, not, the guarantee not coming through, right? So, we heard it was eighty-six percent if we went with the current rate. So, the question is, would you be able to agree to a, um, you know, in, in negotiating a better rate, uh, that, you know, much better than what's currently existing, that's the only point, that's the only reason why I'm looking at, you know, uh, considering, you know, rejecting the bid. And if you don't come to, uh, terms for, um, a new rate, can you give the city a six-month extension or a six-month, yeah, a six-month extension to allow the city go to a bid process at half of the eighty-six percent increase that we would otherwise see today?
At half of the-
Which would make it forty-four, forty-three percent. No, no more than forty-three percent increase of what your current rates are today.
Uh, that's complicated. Yeah, that, that's, that's complicated, but I, I do believe that the first question that was asked was at the original rates that it's-
I'm, I'm, I've changed that.
Yeah, so, I think where you're going with it, uh, it, it's, it's really hard for me without looking at the pro forma and seeing where we're at to, to, to say forty-three percent right now, but I can absolutely agree to you that, uh, if we go into good-faith negotiations and, uh, you, you reject, reject the recommendation, go into good-faith negotiations and we don't reach it, that we can come in under, uh, or, or work off of what the low bid that was received by the city. What percentage we can come off of that, I, I, I just can't answer that to you, Tom, right now, to, to commit to you that it would be half. I, 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 that's a question that I gotta, I gotta talk to other people involved. But I can commit that I would support to them that we come, you know, that we gotta work off of the low numbers submitted. So, we're, we're, I'm, I'm basically committing, saying, "Hey, we're dropping from twenty-nine percent to eighty-six percent." That I could, I can commit to. Eighty-six to forty-three would be something that I have to talk with, but-
Mr. Mayor?
It, I like the concept.
Go ahead.
Uh, I would also like to know that, um, based upon the structure of our bid, if we decide that, uh, for the extension, the only thing we would, uh, contract with a vendor would be for the collection fee only, and the city would handle all of the other fees either through another contract for bulk, if we were to do something different with, uh, recycling or the, the tip fee, the disposal fees that the city would handle, they would come off the top, so we would just be negotiating a collection fee.
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
Could you commit to a forty, no more than a forty-three or forty-four percent increase on that collection cost that the city manager spoke to? Because he just-
After taking the disposal-
He took, he just now took the disposal.
Provided the, uh, selection committee's rankings is thrown out, you go into negotiations with us, we're capping our increase on forty-three percent on the collection only, the city is paying the disposal directly.
And you're going to get indemnified, I assume?
Yeah.
Do you make that commitment?
I, I don't know if the forty-three percent is a good reduction. It may, it may be based on what we know, less than that.
What are you going to find out?
Well, if you're asking for a commitment for forty-three percent-
Well, I, I ask for, I ask for a not-to-exceed amount is what I'm asking for.
I think, uh, once we're in negotiations, I think we're going to come back with a deal that's going to be supported. I, I, I really feel that that's-
I'd like to renew my substitute motion. I want it voted on. Uh, my substit, my substitute motion is to, uh, direct the city manager to negotiate an interim contract with Waste Pro, to negotiate a bulk contract with Eastern, and to call a special meeting when possible, the sooner the better, uh, so the commissioners can get their questions answered on the balance of the RFP.
Okay, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Let's move on. We've been discussing this for a long time.
Can I, can I make a substitute motion then on this?
No, my motion's on the floor, but if you want to make a-
Well, then, then I'd, I'd like to try to, try to deal with this then, just, I, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we accept the, the, uh, the bulk contract and that we reject, uh, the, the, uh, the remaining parts of the bid, and that we direct the city manager to negotiate, uh, with Waste Pro, uh, a, a, a much better rate with the service, and that, uh, that Waste Pro commits to, uh, indemnifying the city, and that they commit to, in the absence of being able to negotiate, uh, a better rate in service, that they will give the city an extension at no more than forty-three percent, uh, for their collection costs.
I'll second that motion.
Second the motion.
City attorney. All right, further discussion?
Y- yes, uh-
Who's that? I quickly, in late, a lot of fuss, but-
Yeah, no, I, I, uh, city attorney, addendum two is kind of muddied.
We're not there yet.
Well, we are there.
We're not there yet.
Because-
We're in, we're in item addendum one. That's what the motion is.
City attorney?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner.
If this motion were to pass, does it muddy addendum two?
City attorney, we have to go to addendum two anyway.
You're going to have to dispose of addendum two no matter what this evening in some, some form or fashion.
Yeah.
And, and you, you've, you've kind of reconnected the discussion between addendum one and two based upon the motion, the substitute motion about the vice mayor.
So, uh-
If I may quickly, because he's taken some bits and parts from addendum two into, into his substitute motion.
And, and this is what concerns me, city attorney. So, we heard, we heard Mr. Mackey on the record essentially say, um, "I will only commit to the vice mayor's motion of not to exceed forty-three percent if we chuck the process, like, we're done with it, like, we're not, like, we're gonna, we're gonna reject all bids and we're gonna go-"
The, the purpose, if I'm-
I, i- if, if I-
Vice mayor?
If, if I, if I may, I know-
But that's not what he said. Point of clarification, vice mayor.
No, I-
I want to get the information correct.
I, I, I just, I just wanted to make it clear that the re, that the point for the six-month extension was to allow us to go back into a bid process.
Okay, so, so, i- if, i- if, if I may, mayor, and I don't want to debate the vice mayor, but essentially, we lost leverage.
All right.
But, by, 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 if we, if we go along your lines, we've lost all leverage because now we could just have an infinite extension of not to exceed forty-three percent. Clearly, I mean, what, what-
I can't, I can't agree with the-
The infinite extension. Okay, so, so, we can, we can't come to terms, we can't figure out the bid process, and we still need a vendor, we still need the garbage picked up, so it's going to be-
There's a motion on the floor to do that.
It would, it would be a month, a month, a month, a month, a month, and it's a never-ending process. What I want to have is a conclusion of calling balls and strikes. This game has to be over at some point.
Okay.
Okay?
Call the question.
So, so, Commissioner, allow, allow me, we can play Robert's roles.
Listen, listen to me, Commissioner-
And, and we can play Robert's rules, and I'll think, I, I will vote no-
Commissioner Schwartz, let me say something. We are continually bringing up the same object. There was a very clear, uh, motion by the vice mayor. Now, I think we need to move on. You, you keep bringing in other things that you like.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to, um, address, uh-
Go ahead.
Commissioner Schwartz, and so, and so, you know, he, he brings the good point that maybe that there's a, a time limit for negotiations where it's determined that, uh, that they come to, uh, agreement or not.
So, why don't we ask the manager, how long, he's, he needs, he needs, he said no earlier than August. That's what I heard earlier.
Well, there's a couple of things. Now, based upon Commissioner's goods, um, motion and what he's recommending, we should be able to, uh, finish this in one day. We could come in on a Monday and resolve it.
This Monday?
Yeah, that's not a holiday, is it?
No, it's not.
Yeah, this Monday, if you're available.
All right, I'm going to call a question.
No, I, I want, I need to get a commitment of, of time. It's a time issue for me.
You just said it, Monday.
No, the manager said for Monday. I want to hear from Mr. Mackey if he can commit to that.
Mr. Mackey, did you commit to that with the, the vice mayor's question?
Yes, I'll make myself available Monday.
Okay. Mayor, Commissioner Castillo, they were going to call a question.
Yeah, I, uh, I, I, I appreciate the vice mayor's effort in this, and I know his heart is in the right place, and his mind is in the right place as well. I can't agree to a, uh, number of an increase tonight. That's not our job.
Okay.
Uh, that's the city manager's job, and I think that he could potentially beat that number. So, for us to have established the number at this dais, is for us to have created this contract here, and that is not our role. And so, I'm going to, I'm going to say no.
Point of clar-
I'm not going to vote for forty-three percent increase.
Okay, and city manager, it's not you negotiating a point that we've discussed, it's negotiating the best we can get from the vendor. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, but the cap would, it could probably never exceed more than forty-three percent was the intent.
I can't, I can't, I can't agree to this, which is cheaper than a hundred and twenty-nine or the eighty-six percent.
Yeah, we, I, that, that was never on the table.
All right, call it, call the discussion, please, just a clarification.
If I could have one more clarification, if I make sure you understand, the percentage is the, the, it's the forty-three percent of the current rate, not what, forty-three percent of what they were proposing.
No, forty-three percent of the, and you understood that from the current rate.
No, I, I heard, I heard, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mackey?
Mayor, I, it was collection.
It's collection only, correct.
Collection only.
Correct.
The portion, which eliminates a lot of-
Correct.
Okay. All right, further discussion?
Mayor, just to clarify the vice mayor's motion to-
All right, let's clarify.
From a legal perspective, I, I, we all get the, the points of reference. When you made reference, Mr. Vice Mayor, to rejecting remaining bids, you mean you're actually terminating the, the, the RFP process, correct?
Correct.
So, you're ending any conversation, um, under that process, which is initiated under the, under chapter thirty-five of the code, so you're essentially terminating the process and are taking the direct approach, given the three-part-
Point of clarification.
I, I don't, I don't hear it that way.
Point of clarification, mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
My understanding was, uh, vice mayor's, uh, motion, substitute motion was to accept the bulk and then to, um, uh, reject the remaining portion of it.
That was correct.
Yeah, if, uh, that's not, that's not how I heard it.
Well, he, that-
That's why I asked.
Okay, city attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please, or have the- Would you please, or have the city clerk, repeat the vice mayor's motion?
That would be best to be done for the record.
Slowly, so everybody understands it, please.
Vice Mayor Good made a substitute motion to accept bulk contract and reject remaining parts of the bid, and direct the city manager to negotiate with Waste Pro a much better rate of service, and Waste Pro commits to indemnifying city, indemnifying the city and commit to, in the absence of negotiation, to give the city extension of no more than forty-three percent of the collection costs, seconded by Commissioner.
I think I heard that before.
And that was a six-month extension.
Six months.
Six months.
All right? All right, uh, city clerk, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
The best deal for the residents, yes.
Mayor Ordin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right.
Uh, for, for the record, uh, mayor, I, I just, I just, I just wanna say that, um, uh, restate that, um, there, there have been issues with this procurement process. When the manager comes back at a, um, at the best negotiated and good faith, uh, this commission will have another opportunity to vote that up or down.
Okay, that's part of the process.
That's a part of the process.
Well, you can't keep adding more processes. You know, the manager knows what he has to do.
Mayor, I, I just wanna.
You said you didn't agree with the procurement, now you're saying you do.
There's no need to be nasty with the commissioner. Just listen to what he says.
Commissioner Castillo, I'm not talking to you.
Yeah, I'm talking to you.
Good, I'm talking to you. I'm trying to get this, I'm trying to get this meeting moving in a manner that is professional.
Mayor, mayor, in, in all fairness, okay, in all fairness, my, my level of frustration began by the insertion of your motion at the beginning of the process. Be, we've been trying to unwind.
Okay, we unwind.
We, we've been trying to unwind the freight train that you stuck in front of us, like, two hours ago.
It was my opinion. Okay, city attorney, how about addendum two?
That's moot now.
City attorney, is that completed?
Two things that I can, mayor, commissioner.
We have to reject anything on that?
Addendum number two is subsumed within addendum one in the context of the motion by the vice mayor, which just was adopted by a four-to-one vote.
All right. Report to the league representatives, too late for that, and tonight for me, we got things happening, breakfast with the president, coffee with the president. Manager?
Yes, mayor, I just have really two announcements. Uh, I did put out an email, and we're going to be advertising extensively. Uh, the budget visioning workshop is June the ninth.
Oh, good.
And the community meeting that we're gonna talk about budget with our residents is going to be held on June third.
Okay, any, anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, mayor, that's it.
City attorney?
Yes, mayor?
Go ahead.
I'll defer. Thank you very much. I'd get, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Good on your item eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Give me a moment.
Gee, this temperature dropped.
Well, we had complaints that you were hot, so.
Who was that? I'm cold.
Well, someone was. If you would, uh, Daniel? Could you ask him to control?
We only got one more item, don't worry about it.
Okay, don't worry about it.
Get my car, I'll be warm. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
Give me just a moment here, I need to.
Take your time, take your time.
How long? How long have this, like, um?
Gotta, gotta go.
Why? Well, get it, you can hear back there. I went back there twice. You're making it longer by talking to him.
It'll be long.
Oh, God. All right, go ahead, Vice Mayor, please. I can hear back there, I, I do it twice.
Oh, my gosh.
Go ahead.
What time is it?
Ten thirty.
Oh, that's cool.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
So, tonight, what I, I'd like to do is, um, is bring forward, uh, some information and, and request the commission to provide some direction. Um, this is, uh, dealing with our, uh, solid waste disposal, and, um, as you all know, we've had groups together, and we've been meeting, and we're trying to figure this bigger problem out. Um, and so we're, we're, we're getting to a point where we're now, you know, the delegates have been involved, but now we need to bring in all, all, all the city commission. So, um, I wanna say, uh, thank you to, um, Mr. Mike Cerrio. He is, uh, been like one of the lead legal advisors to this entire process. Uh, he, he operates along with the, the county attorney and, uh, and another attorney, uh, from another firm, uh, and, and helping us, uh, guide us in, in, in making, uh, decisions that are legally correct and, and, uh, certainly one that will support, uh, the entire county. So, tonight, I just wanna present some of the presentation. Mr. Cerrio and I will be doing this together, um, as he has certain specialty, uh, knowledge that I don't, and vice versa.
You've been at all the meetings.
Who are you?
All right, so let's just get rolling here, let's see. All right, so, uh, here's the summary of, uh, what, what we're just gonna talk about. We're just gonna kinda like review a little bit of history on the solid waste disposal. Um, we're gonna talk about the solid waste and recycling study that was, uh, provided, uh, by a company called Arcadis after the dissolution of the Resource Recovery Board, uh, or the Resource Recovery System. Uh, we're gonna talk about the memorandum of understanding that, uh, this commission executed along with all the other cities in Broward County, uh, then talk about the progress we've made so far, and then speak a little bit about, uh, what the purpose of, which is governance of, of a regional system, and talk about other considerations that we need to, uh, bring forward. And then the final is just discussion amongst us, and, and you all having, uh, give us direction on which way you want us to go.
Okay, can I ask you a question, Vice Mayor? I'm, uh, a delegate, I'm alternate delegate on that committee with you, and I know you, we made a, a decision, go independent for the MOU?
Well, we're gonna, all that's gonna come out, but this, yeah, allow me the opportunity, okay? So, so we're gonna talk, uh, so let's just talk a little bit about the history for a moment. So, you know, back in nineteen eighty-seven, you know, we all so, were, were faced with the same kinda crisis that we're faced with today. Uh, we have, uh, you know, we were all, we're all fragmented, we're doing disposal, you know, from a municipal level, we're not doing it from a regional level. Back in nineteen eighty-seven, they had the same issue, and then what happened was they were able to create this resource recovery system. So Broward County and the twenty-six municipalities all joined it, they did it through an interlocal agreement, and then this district was dependent to the county, so basically what happened was is that, uh, even though, uh, everybody was a part of it, the county had final say and pretty much the budget, and you, as we all know, if you own the budget, you own everything, right? So, um, but it, but it worked for a while, um, and, and, you know, through the Resource Recovery Board, and, and the thing is, is that, uh, Pembroke Pines, uh, was not a member, but there were also four other cities that were not a member because they joined a separate type of, uh, arrangement, and, uh, those other cities were Hollendale Beach, Pompano Beach, um, Oakland Park, and, um.
I think it was Parkland.
Parkland, right? So, those, uh, cities never became a member of, uh, the Resource Recovery Board, never entered into, into a local agreement with the county, but did enter into an interlocal agreement amongst their, those five. And henceforth, that's why we are still using Reuters, but then, of course, Reuters is expiring, uh, you know, very, very shortly here. So in, uh, two thousand thirteen, the ILA expired, um, they did an asset distribution, basically, there was a lot of cash, a lot of cash was returned back to the city. Uh, the main, uh, the main asset, uh, was, that was left was the landfill that's out west, and that landfill got turned over to Broward County, so now Broward County owns that landfill, it's no longer a part of, of all the cities that were part of interlocal agreement. And then basically, um, the only thing that was left was what they call the Alpha Two Fifty. It's just a piece of property that's in Pompano Beach. Uh, you actually see it when you drive by Turnpike, if you ever see where the bus depot is up in the Pompano Beach area, there's a piece of land right next to it, Woody, that's it right there. And the reason why that asset was held is because everybody recognizes that there's still a need to try to get into a regionalization. And rather than just get rid of that asset, it was, you know, to say, take a look and say, hey, can we use this property and, and use it for, uh, some solid waste component, whether it be recycling, or whether it be for a transfer station, or whether it be for some other purpose that would be, um, used for a regional system. So, um, so the recycling, um, study was done by a company called Arcadis, and, and basically they were charged with, you know, how to reach a seventy-five percent recycling goal because that was the target that's in state statutes. Uh, they were also to look at, uh, regionalization of, um, of solid waste disposal, and then just look at the Alpha Two Fifty, and what's the value of the Alpha Two Fifty in the disposal solution. Uh, the Arcadis team was made up of primarily Arcadis, a company called Kessler, which does a lot of solid waste consulting, Total Municipal Solution, which is a local consulting firm, and GMAC, which is also another local consulting firm specializing in solid waste management. And then that study got completed in, uh, two thousand and eight. So, the solid waste, uh, recycling study, that's what's in your backup, that's that nice dick document there, it's got a whole lot of details in it. Um, I'm not really gonna go through and talk about the study much, because if you wanna really look at it, you, 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 you can, you can see all the numbers and, uh, any analysis and things.
I'll read it tonight.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a several-weekend reading piece of thing, right? But the bo-, but the primary thing is, is that they came out with these recommendations, very, very important. So they created three scenarios for, uh, how to reach a recycling goals. Those scenarios were nothing more than a various combination on how to handle solid waste, you know, whether, whether you wanna take, uh, you know, garbage over here, press hospital, or, or, you know, the, the food products over here and organics, and then, you know, uh, green waste to another place, and, you know, burn things, and blah, blah, blah. Yeah, right?
Very complicated.
Yeah, it is, actually. Um, and then they also, uh, stated that, uh, you know, that Alpha Two Fifty did serve a solid waste purpose and is probably integral to, you know, the three scenarios that were provided. Um, and then they also offered a, uh, create an independent district governance because they recognize a lot of the trust issues that existed amongst the cities in the county, and that was because it was a dependent district, so they were saying do some form of independence where no one city or the county controlled the district, is, is purely a collaborative effort amongst anybody who's participating. Um, and then, uh, they, they, you know, recommend that we do regional-based systems on public-private ownership. A lot of, a lot of these, uh, disposal sites now are owned by another party, so you can get into a contract with them, you know, or we can build something, uh, and, and this time not give the asset to the company that manages it, but keep the asset and then contract a private company to manage it, so. So all that, uh, was done. After that, uh, study was done, those recommendations were made, then there was this memorandum of understanding that was created, uh, for a solid waste and recycling system. So, what I'm gonna do right now is I'm gonna kinda like turn it over, um, the mic, so he can, uh, speak to the memorandum of understanding.
Uh, good evening, I'm Mike Sorolo, it's the attorney's office. It's, uh, really good to see everybody in person as well. Um, so real quickly, the memorandum, memorandum of understanding set up a framework, uh, for the cities to get together and to collaboratively study how to move forward with some sort of long-term plan for this, for disposal of solid waste and recycling. Um, and it set up this, um, I guess, structure, where the first step that was done is that each city that signed the MOU would, would assign a delegate of an elected official, um, to be part of, to go and, and, and collect information, bring it back to the different, um, cities. I don't know if any of you remember, there used to be an EMS coalition fifteen, twenty years ago, where it was kinda modeled on that type of thing. Um, and then from that elected group of officials, there was gonna be a smaller working group that would be.
So Mike, if I, if I may, I'm sorry, I, I may have probably jumped you, I, just can you talk about the MOU itself first?
Okay.
Can you, can you see it on the screen?
I do, I have it. Well, I have the.
This is, this is the slide, I'm, just talk about the MOU itself first.
Okay, so they, so what the MOU did is it, it put the, it was, it was intended to get all the cities and the county together. It was intended to, um, have cities all kinda sign in and say, we're gonna study this, and we're gonna work together, we're, um, you know, with the goal of being in the same system and contributing our waste long-term if we can come up with the answers to these, uh, solutions such as governance and how the system would work. Um, and I was gonna get to how it worked with the process to review the recommendations and establish regional system, kinda working backwards through how the system was set up, because part of that system was gonna be a, um, a working group of, of elected officials, which was a smaller group from the delegates each of the cities, um, appointed, as well as a technical advisory committee that was set up by, um, um, appointed by the member cities as well to have their staff kinda look at all these technical issues that would come with setting up a regional system. And, um, the, the working group was empowered, wa- wa- was intended to basically make some sort of, review it from a policy managerial, um, perspective after they got any information from the technical advisory committee. And so, a lot of the time that was spent over the past year and a half was by the technical advisory committee going forth and looking at issues that were asked of them by the working group. Um, governance, uh, systems, um, of, uh, flow control, um, volume, um, uh, you know, infrastructure, um, revenue generation, et cetera. And, and so they, they could bring that back to the working group, and the working group would look at that information and provide, um, recommendations, um, to the cities so that we could have a process through the MOU that we could all work together to come up with a system that could go long-term. So, in, included in the memorandum of understanding, there was, um, you know, a commitment to work together, to, um, continue to study that, that if we, that, that, if a system could be negotiated, that the waste would be contributed, but there was not a commitment, because that's all done later on through the process. Um, and, and then it had a timeframe, and I don't know if you wanna, um, go to it, but the most, one of the things that I saw, I just saw on your slide there was there was no commitment to do anything with your waste. It was just a commitment to work together to look at it long-term.
Yeah, like if you didn't like it, you could, like, get out.
Yeah, you could back out at any time. So it had, and we had a rather ambitious timeframe there. Um, if you, if you think about it, it probably was unrealistic to think you could go from soup to nuts on a determination of formal government in, um, in that short period of time, basically in five months from when you got the, the working group and the technical group committee together, and then the COVID, um, slowed down some of the processes, like everybody else, we had to convert to virtual meetings and trying to have virtual meetings with this information, uh, did slow it down. Um, the goal was to have something by last September, and the reason for that was if one of the options was gonna be a true, a, a independent district that was gonna be required to have legislative authority in Tallahassee, you have to work backwards from a timeframe to get a bill prepared and filed and considered in a legislative session. And the goal had originally been to have it done, if there, if, to have something in place by the end of this calendar year. So if you needed to have, and when I say this calendar year, twenty twenty-one, so if you needed to have something, uh, adopted in Tallahassee, it would have had to been done in this most recent legislative session. Um, we obviously didn't make that, um, and that, that twenty twenty-two date is important from the county's perspective because they have their long-term agreements with Willabrator to process, um, the waste that a lot of the cities have joined in through an interlocal agreement, and that comes up for renewal in twenty twenty-two, and there needs to be a certain commitment made for a certain amount of waste by early twenty twenty-two in order for them to be able to move forward with an extension of that contract. So, um, it was, it was hoped, I think, by the county that there would be a structure in place so they wouldn't have to renew it. Now, it's looking like there's gonna have to be some renewal or some extension on that, and, and they're looking to have the cities, that's a different issue, kinda help through and maybe make some commitments so that they can extend that. But that's why that timeline was put together so, um, in an ambitious way with the hope that we could come up with an answer in time to have the solution, which we still could do if we're not gonna pursue anything through the floor legislature in this calendar year twenty twenty-one.
Great. Tech D help. It's advancing here, but it's not advancing there. Does that have a blue screen? Hmm. That looks funny. How about if I do this? Let me just try this. I do this. How do I-
Where are we?
Look at this mound of garbage.
What? What is that?
It's recycled.
How come I don't have that on my- How come I don't have that on my-
That's what I, that's what I-
You keep it down, man.
What?
Let me-
No, I, I see yours, I don't have that. I got a, I got a, a mountain hole. Here. There is a mountain hole, that's all I got, May nineteenth.
Yeah.
No, I want it there. Oh my gosh. Lord.
I, I, I'm actually ready to talk about governance.
What?
You wanted to announce yourself while we're sitting here.
Can we swear we read that?
We're all going, you know, who, who, uh-
Okay, where are we?
Sorry, just, uh- I'm there almost.
I read the whole thing, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Any summary, any closing? How's that, counselor? How's that going?
Oh, gosh. It's quarter, it's quarter to eleven. My closing argument-
I'm going to have to get my warm cot card.
Go ahead and, I lost my weather.
Let's call, let's call a special meeting next week. And the computer works.
Can we continue this another time or you need it now?
It needs correction.
This is more exciting than what I can.
Yeah, why not share it?
The computer crashed?
Take your chance.
I love it.
Don't do it in daycare, give it to a guy.
Just rejoin. Can you do that?
Go ahead and do it.
You got it?
Yeah, you got it.
Drive safely.
I can't, I can't believe the amount of cars that you- Gotta be young people that, and they passed me going at least eighty miles an hour. Douglas Road, lines meeting. I, I mean, it's just absolute madness. And then you see him, then another one that come up with kind of the same crack and they'll start playing games, going in and out. And you know, that one on eighty-fifth there, that's how they smashed up and almost killed. You could hear the, you could hear the noise though. Well, you know what? I blame the manufacturers. They put a Honda SUV on the screen for sale and they show you speeding by nine hundred miles an hour in the desert.
Oh, it's a front computer.
Amazing.
So who's gonna make the regulationation? You or the vice mayor?
No, 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 wrong one.
Is this playing a supporting role?
Is it, is it important that we have this tonight, Vice Mayor?
You know, uh, the, the reality is that we can probably push it to the next meeting. I really, but I know I got another meeting.
I'm ready to talk about governance if you want, if you want to hear opinions. I don't know about the, I don't know if everyone else is ready to do it. But I read the material, I'm ready to go. So, it's up to you.
Well, what I could do is I could just finish talking about it, just, I'm sorry. No visuals, I apologize. Technical difficulties. All right, so essentially what happened is, is that the, um, you know, there's, uh, there's, there's three governance structures that we had, uh, identified. And, uh, what happened was the working group actually made a, a, a recommendation to go with an independent, uh, district that was formed through the, uh, state legislation. But that has changed since that meeting substantially. And what I wanted to do is, uh, share with you the reason why. So there, the three, the three governance structures are, one is the dependent solid waste district, which is the old-fashioned RB, getting to an interlocal agreement. It's like a repeat of the past. Um, then you have the, uh, independent solid waste special district, which is formed by state statutes. Um, now, as I stated, that was recommended by the working group, but since then, that support for that form of governance has been withdrawn from the working group. And a lot of that was due to the fact that, um, you know, during the delegation meeting, uh, you know, Senator Geller, Senator Rich, and, um, some others weighed in and spoke about, you know, the political climate of the state at this point. Anything you bring up there, it's almost like saying you're willfully going to give control to the state and the state then could make appointments that are political based and contracts based on other things as well. So it was almost like, oh, well, that's probably not a really good idea to do that, right? Yeah, so, uh, and then the third, the third governance structure is still an independent format, it's, but it's formed by an interlocal agreement. And, um, there's currently two solid waste districts in the state of Florida that operate that way and they're, and they're listed as independent districts. But, but what it is, is that they are actually in an interlocal agreement. So the entities that are participating all agreed as, uh, members to form this, uh, this authority, and that's what they call themselves, the authority. Um, and they manage it just like they would if they were a dependent district or if they were an independent district from the, you know, from the state. But, uh, what I was gonna share with you. How do I share it now? No, I don't see it.
All right, go ahead, continue.
You come on over here and fix it?
Sure.
So, um, so the goal was to just share with you what, what the dependent solid waste district's benefits and draw, for all, all the, all the, uh, governance structures, what the benefits are and what the, um, what the drawbacks are, so. So when you look at a dependent solid waste district, uh, basically the benefits are, you know, uh, it meets the criteria in terms of timeline. It was one of the things that Mike was showing on that time schedule. Um, you know, there's monies available and there's capabilities. Uh, there's local control over the elements because it's through the county. Uh, there's flexibility in some, in the structure and, and the composition, can levy, uh, appropriate assessments, and there's no restriction on facilities, debt, or structure because again, it's through the county. The county uses their name to, 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 to back, um, any, uh, debt instruments. The drawback is that it requires a working threshold, a buy-in from municipalities, so-called the fifty-one percent of the counties have to agree in order to, to, or it's fifty-one percent of the population has to agree to it. Uh, requires the district to be dependent to the county in one of three ways, either approval of membership, that means the county appoints people, or approval of the budget where they approve the money, or, uh, or they themselves serve as the governing body. Probably the biggest issue with that too now is that there's a potential issue with dual office holding. So there's no member of this commission could sit on that, um, guidance board or what would be the resource recovery board.
With, uh, question with, when you're, when you're talking about these, that are gonna join, these cities that are gonna join in and they have to take a vote on, on an And they have to take a vote on an, on, on an issue. Is it one city, one vote, you know, one man, one vote kind of thing? Or, or are there weighted votes on anything?
In a dependent district, it's, it's not that way. In a dependent district, you know, your vote is a body, but it, it actually, you know, goes, the county basically is, is the backer of all the, any votes that come out of that.
So it, so it wouldn't be that, it would be-
And it wouldn't be, what they're saying is there's no city that can sit on that board. Or any elected official could sit on that board. Thank you, Mike. Well, thank you.
You're saying on the authority?
If, if it's a dependent district, there is an issue with dual office holding if a municipal elected official were to sit on the board of the dependent district because-
They had it wired.
How about the authority?
With the authority, there is no, uh, the authority would, through an interlocal agreement, it would be in the nature in a way that the authority, the interlocal agreement is prepared. And under this scenario, if, if that independent, um, authority, the interlocal agreement would be structured in a way to provide that independence so it would not create a dual office holding issue.
I have a question, this question about voting, waiting voters.
Again, you know, you, you kind of got a little bit ahead of where Vice Mayor is, but that would have to be part of the agreement.
So we're back on screen, so fortunately. So the independent solid waste from, uh, from state legislation, uh, again, there's benefits here about being able to raise money, uh, you know, there's, independence is not bound to a single entity in any way, so everybody would have to participate when you do it, uh, through the state. Uh, if, if the legislator allows, you'll have, you can have flexibility in the terms of composition, or the legislator can just say, no, I'm gonna appoint who's gonna be on there. I mean, and they could do that anytime, the governor. Uh, they can levy, uh, uh, assessments, there's no restriction again on facilities, debt, structure, and all cities are required to participate. So if it goes through legislation, you don't have a choice. You have to be a part of it. Or even with the resource, uh, and with a dependent district, remember, you could, you could choose, but, you know, at fifty percent plus one, you know, it, it creates the district then. Here, everybody's in, in a sense. Uh, the drawbacks, uh, you know, you, you lose the local control, um, it's the longest timeline to get a system and, uh, district in place, a governance in place. I mean, we already missed this, this year, you have to get ready for next year, it might not even be ready until, what, twenty twenty-three or so. Um, and then of course, like I said again, there's interference with, uh, the state, again, loss of local, local control. And then here's the, uh, the independent interlocal agreement entity, the benefits are a lot the same as some of these others, it meets criteria again with money, capabilities. Now though, however, you got local control over all the elements, um, when the entity is formed, there's flexibility in the structure and the composition, you can levy appropriate assessments, there's no restriction on facilities, debt, or structure, so it's very similar to the other independent districts done to the state, but you have full total control. Uh, the drawback, uh, is that, you know, everybody's gotta trust each other. You gotta get into the agreement and, and, and that's it. There's, uh, there's, uh, less historical examples in Florida, but there are, like I say, two, uh, two solid waste entities that are in the state of Florida that are capable of, that have been, uh, running since, uh, nineteen eighty-eight. So they've been in existence for quite some while, time now. Uh, they can't levy taxes, uh, like you could if you were legislatively formed, but you can levy assessments. And, uh, not all cities are required to enjoin. But what I put here is, this is one of the key elements of the MOU in this section, and it stated that the county and the participating municipalities prefer a governance structure that maintains local control and flexibility while affording the opportunity to effectively establish assessments. So this independent interlocal agreement form of governance serves the purpose of the MOU and it seems to be gaining a lot of traction with other municipalities at this So, uh, there are other considerations that are coming before, uh, the delegation and that's called the waste generation study. One of the things that, uh, came, uh, as we move forward, if you're gonna get into and create a district, you gotta know what kind of stuff you're generating and what kind of assets do you need in order to handle that material. And then, you know, so that can then define what is going to be the cost of, uh, of the system that everybody who's participating will share. The county has agreed to pay fifty percent of that, so that leaves about a half a million dollars for other cities to part, uh, to pay, uh, the participating cities are to pay on a pro-rata share. Um, and then there would be an amendment to the MOU in order to, uh, about, clarify who's gonna pay for what. And that leaves us, like, what is it then, Tom, are you asking us for? So there really are two issues here. The two issues are, one, uh, what is the governance structure, uh, direction that we like if we continue to pursue this? Do we want to pursue dependent? Do we want to pursue independent through the state? Or do we want to pursue independent through the interlocal agreement? So that's a direction that needs to be brought forward from the city of Pembroke Pines. And then, um, the other question is, you know, are we going to participate in the solid waste, um, generation study? I, um, I can tell you that I would like to recommend to this, to my colleagues here, uh, that we move forward, uh, with the independent IOA format of governance. I am not making a recommendation at this time for, uh, the, um, the solid waste generation study only because I, there, the information is not forward yet. We don't know how much it, you know, who, how, who all is gonna want to participate, how much is it gonna, you know, are we gonna do a cost share? And reality is, I don't even know what the scope of work is at this point. So, um, I don't, I can't speak to it and defend, you know, participating in that.
Yeah, I, uh, I have some comment. So, so I'm very glad to hear that, um, that the committee moved off the independent. Uh, because I've been saying it since, uh, the discussion began, that this would instantly become a captive of the state, um, more precisely, a captive of the waste companies who can go up to the state and do whatever they want with it. So, um, the second thing is, I'm not sold on local control. This is a regional system. And while the county has been a problem in the past, sometimes cities are no bargain either. And so, um, I don't want to be making decisions along these lines. Now, you're asking for input, I'm gonna give you my input. I mean, I know other people feel differently, but I'm gonna give you my input. I don't like, I don't like far-flung boards that tax people. I like, uh, boards that are elected by residents who tax people and who are responsible to the people for that. That's not, that's not a model on the table. Um, I don't know if that can be a model on the table. Uh, I don't know if the county charter can be changed to create such a board, uh, uh, with people who actually know what the hell this thing is and who could run for office and be accountable directly to the people for a rate. That to me is the best, is the best answer. Under this ILA business, would the IG have jurisdiction?
Um, I hadn't looked at that, but I would assume that he would because the county, this, all the cities that he has jurisdiction over would be all the party.
He might not, under the independent board, they might, our state board, they might not because it was really a, a creature of the state. So that's, we're getting a little bit closer. I like the, I like the MOU better than the independent. And so I'm very glad that we've moved off of that. But to be honest with you, we didn't join, we didn't join the, uh, the county's, uh, board because we found a better way. Here in Pembroke Pines, uh, our staff sat down and it was a numbers crunch, had nothing to do, we didn't ask questions about governance or, this was a business decision. And we found a better way. Now, in the, it's true that, that the deal that we had was better in the first couple of years than it is now. But that has to be, that has to be factored into how smart was the decision that we made. A lot of people, I remember Ron Greenstein and I remember Eileen and other people tugging me at the ear and saying, oh, you guys are crazy, you guys are crazy. I, I, I took a look at the spreadsheets. We were not crazy, we were right. Charlie was right, we did the right thing. It was still the right, even now that we're paying more than some others, it was still the right decision to make. If you look at how much we paid over that period of time, what's the new game gonna be? He has several rabbits under his hat. He's not talking about them, but I know what- He's not talking about them, but I know what they are. I think all, all of us should. And one of them is this one. If they come up with a number that makes sense, that's a regional system that works for everybody. We have to learn as cities that there are things that we control, that there are things that federal government controls, that there are things that the state control, and there are things that we need to do together regionally. That's why we have a county. And it's their job to do it and they are elected by the people to do that. So my approach in all of this is this should stay, uh, uh, the Resource Recovery Board. If we can make improvements to it based on past knowledge, that's what we should do. But that's a system that for many decades served us very, very well. Yeah, it had a couple of spots on it. Yeah, it needed a couple of sections that needed to be polished. Yeah, maybe there was a little, you know, a corrosion on the side of the car. But all those things are fixed with Bondo. We could sit down and we could figure out what those problems were and solve them. Once you create this thing, this board has no heft. It has no money behind it except what it, what it taxes people for. The county has deep pockets. They have assets. They have an environmental board, a, a division. No city has these things. The economy of scale must be, has to be much better with the county. And I understand that, that, that there are cities that say that we don't want, we don't want the county to have it. But those are emotional reasons, like this whole thing, local control. You said it a couple, I'm not picking on what you said. I mean, it was a great presentation, by the way. But local control, there is no need for local control. This is a regional system. There should be local input. I love the idea of the work group. I don't know if that was there before. I wasn't that close to it when, when, when the Resource Recovery Group was there. I don't know whether they had that. That's an important thing in negotiating with the county. I would figure out a way for our state to have a little bit more strength. But I, I think that, I think that it, there's, there's no better, more reliable, sturdy way for the taxpayer in Broward County to, to deal with this than a dependent district. That's my input to you.
Thank you.
If you're going to, if you're going to go one of the others, I like the one you're choosing. It, it, it would be my second choice. The last choice would be independent. And I said that from the beginning. Last thing I want to, I want to comment. There's been some discussion about how recycling is now a waste of time because we're basically burning it all. That's a very, that's a very guarded secret in, in Broward County. If that gets out, people are going to be very angry. You were there and the mayor was there at the one meeting that I was able to attend at this board. And I asked a very pointed question. So the recycling has fallen apart because our, the, the people that buy the recycling don't, no longer want to buy it. What are we going to do with all of this glass and all of this metal and all of this plastic and all of these, all this paper? Somebody's going to have to melt that stuff down and figure out ways to create products with it. This is free stuff. It needs to create revenue coming back to us in a way that offsets the cost. Otherwise, forget about the conversation we had tonight. That's going to be even worse under, under, under the new scenario if we don't have any money coming back on the recycling. Guess what? To my knowledge, nothing, zeros being done about that issue. I've not seen a proposal specifying how Alpha Two, Two Fifty, is it? Is going to be used, what kind of factory they're going to put there to grind glass, even if they ground it back into sand. And that would at least have some use. What are they going to do with all these metals? Even if they melted, melted it down and created public art with it, that would be better than, 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 uh, whatever, I don't even know what they're doing with it or, or what they're doing with, with, with all these plastics.
Jerry Gunstberger, they mentioned.
There it is. Gunsburger wood. And, and, and we could, we could sit down and figure out. Boy, does that take us back, right?
That sure does.
All of these, all of these are things that we could sit down and figure out. But somebody's going to have to get their arms around it. And that's not going to, in my opinion.
But that's the point.
In my respectful opinion, that's not going to be some far-flung group of, of, of local elected officials. This, you need the county for.
Vice Mayor.
And that's my view.
I'm for an independent district. I think we can't.
The ILA, the interlocal independent entity.
And, and because I think we have at least some control. Nine county commission members, nine members, we have hundreds in our cities. So the, this is an ongoing thing. It's not going to be overnight. They're going to be able to burn this and burn that. Otherwise, they would have done it already. I haven't heard about it in a few years. And anybody else comment? All right?
So just, I'm just looking for consensus that, that the preference would be the interlocal.
What is, I mean, I kind of think I know from how you were, how you were, you know, presenting and everything. But what would be your preference as the one who's really worked on to this?
The interlocal agreement, independent, independent entity. It would be like an independent authority through an interlocal agreement.
Committee.
The, the members of this board are appointed or elected. Which, which one?
There, there would be similar to the way it is right now. The commission would appoint somebody to represent that city on that, on that board.
That, that only makes sense if it's by population.
But every.
By, by population because Pembroke Pines continues to be the one, one voice of reason and we keep getting outnumbered. So it really needs to be by population.
Oh, we got five other cities.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
And Greg Ross is the chairman.
Can I suggest, I think, the purpose of what we're, what, what the vice mayor is trying to do now is to be able to go back to the delegate group, the working group and say, okay, Pembroke Pines has endorsed the concept of moving forward with an independent IOA entity. Now let's negotiate it. Let's put it together because ultimately it's going to come back to the cities. And so the questions you're asking about one city, one vote or population or, or revenue, that's all going to have to be part of an interlocal agreement. And then when you see it, you might not like it, but.
Here's, here's my, here's my reason behind that because, I mean, Broward County is a donor county, right? I mean, you don't find toll roads on I-95 in Polk County. You know what I'm saying? We keep throwing the money up. So my concern is if you go with this whole statewide initiative, we're going to be the ones funding the entire project.
Well, that's, that's one of the fears.
You got what you need?
Mr. Mayor, if you will, quickly, defending for the vice mayor. Mike, does the vice mayor need an actual motion or does he need a resolution? What, what formal legal document does, does he need to, 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 to attend the meeting with?
He just needs whatever he's comfortable with so he can go and vote on behalf of the city and say, yeah, the city of Pembroke Pines endorsed this concept.
I want to make sure you're comfortable that you.
I appreciate that.
Though not unanimous.
All right. All right? Good presentation. Good stuff tonight.
Reservations, is that what that was?
Second. That lady's the one who worked.